Thank you so much for coming out. It is 6:30 at this point, so we are going to kick the meeting off. Can we get a roll call vote to open up the meeting, please?
For Will Sankowitz.
Here.
Steve Sylvia.
Here.
Steve Owen.
Here.
Jen Blum.
Here.
Bob Clark.
Yep.
John Burke.
Here.
Brenna Donahue.
Here.
Thank you.
Awesome. So obviously, there's the addition of Mr. Strauss and his administrative team here, present tonight as well, Ms. Fleming and Ms. Boulay. Ms. Deirdre Farrell-Welch is absent tonight with Jeanne Fox as well. Is anyone else outside of Lake Cameron recording the meeting tonight? No? Great. Thank you. Going down to agenda item number three, we are going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving right along here, agenda item number four, we have a student presentation to the school committee. Ms. Camille, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, thank you. Good, thank you. What's going on?
So, some things that happened recently. We had the football game, which we won against ORR. We also had the guest speaker come to our school, and she did a great job, and I hope that her message reached out to people who need to hear it. We also had parent-teacher conferences last week, where 651 total meetings were held, which is great. And then, we also hosted the November Math Team Meet. And an update about breakfast at Upon Aquit. We, like, at first, we were only having, like, 15 people come in every morning to get, like, take advantage of the breakfast that we had. Now, we're having almost 70 students every morning to come in. The school play happened this past weekend. I think it was a pretty good success. Most people who came said that they really enjoyed it. Some things that are upcoming, we have winter sports just began, and in wellness classes, we're starting the volleyball tournament, which a lot of the Upon Aquit students love to be a part of. We also have a lot of field trips happening this week. Like, we have the criminal law classes are going to the prison, I think Plymouth, but I'm not sure which one. And then Wellness is going to Sky Zone. Sports Journalism and Sports Medicine are going to the TD Garden. And then, there's also an in-house field trip for the Art of Healthy Living and Psychology classes. They're doing an art therapy session. And then, the DECA District Competition Testing Component is going to be next week, on December 12th. Also, next week, on the Thursday, is going to be the Winter Holiday Concert for the Choir and Band. And that Friday is going to be the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Award Ceremony. And the last thing is that the week before break is going to be Holiday Spirit Week. It's going to be from the 18th to the 22nd. And to kind of prep for the holidays, we're doing something on the morning announcements every day, where we talk about, like, a holiday that's coming up, whether it be, like, Hanukkah or Kwanzaa or Christmas. Like, today, we talked about Hanukkah, which starts tomorrow, and we might do that for, like, the next couple of days, and then we'll switch it up for a different holiday, kind of just like to inform everyone and also get everyone into the spirit.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. Any questions from the committee for Camille? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Camille.
Thank you, Camille.
Have a good night.
You as well. Take care. Thank you. Next up, Gray's Students with Principal Dr. Sullivan. You guys are up.
I'll show a quick intro. I have Mr. Lestage and some of our wonderful students here with us tonight. Last year in June, well, this past June, I got what was, I thought, pretty devastating news, that Mr. Robin Ireland, who's also served as a coach at Upon Aquit for years as well, our PE teacher, was leaving us. And it was really bittersweet because he was leaving us for a job as an AD. And he's loving it and staying in touch with us. And then, as happy as I was for him, I also had the opportunity to have a teacher, Mr. Lestage, who's been a magnificent teacher for 13 years, 13 years?
13.
Yeah. In NE LA, who's always wanted to make the LEAP to Phys Ed. So with the support of Mr. Strauss and Mrs. Fleming, we were able to make that happen for him. We went through all his G E S E hoops, and he's a fully certified Phys Ed teacher who's brought palpable enthusiasm to the gymnasium, and you'll see that here. So, he has.
All right, here we go. So I brought a squad with me today. I'll give you a little introduction here. We try and liven up our presentations. So I was told back in the day, you can make them laugh, or you can wow them in the first few seconds. Anything you say after that doesn't matter, so that's what we're going to do right now. So, without further ado, here we go. My starting lineup for today, we've got some fourth graders that are going to be joining us here today. Our rookie sensations coming from the fourth grade at Gray's, we have Izzy Grant. Our other rookie sensation is Ethan Oliver. Our final rookie for the year is Mr. Mason Ward. We also have some seasoned veterans at Gray's, our fifth graders, who have stepped up to the plate to help us today. We have Mr. Camden Messier. Ms. Rose Aruda. Ms. Aubrey Kamara. Mr. Antonio Lumbo III. And last but not least, Mr. Dizzy Desmond Lewis himself. So, that's all we got. No, just kidding. So anyway, we put together a little presentation here. They're going to head on over. If you guys want to go stand on each side of the screen over there. I'm going to give the committee a little time to watch them go through some of the presentations. They're going to go through and share what they've kind of been doing. We decided to do a little day in the life of Phys Ed, trying to keep it technical there, not gym, right? Physical education here at Gray's. So we're mixing in the health and wellness part as well as obviously the athletic part to it. So, I just need Ms. Fleming, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide for us. When you walk into the gym, over the years, if you've been in there, quite a barren background, right? White walls, blue mats. We've tried to liven it up with some sayings and some things around. When you walk in the gym door now, you see, if it doesn't challenge you, it doesn't change you. That's how we approach each day in gym class these days. You've got to find something to challenge us, and hopefully, over time, changes us for the better. So this is the entrance to the gym. Good to go. So we did a typical day with Mr. Lestage. They're going to go through and give you a little brief synopsis of what a day looks like in some of the units that we started this year up to this point. So we start off, there's just the agenda of warm-ups, home base. We use the Smart Board in gym class. We're a 21st century classroom now in the gym. And then, how we wrap it up. So I think the first one here, we have, Mr. Lumbo's going to take over, what warm-ups look like for gym.
For warm-ups, we start off with running two laps around the gym, and then we pick an exercise from each board.
All right. Yep, good to go.
Not the links?
No, no, no links. So I use this board in the class. They see this every day, so it comes up with what they need to do. Sometimes, I'll use videos to go with it, but these visuals are actually around the gym that they see on the whiteboard, so they know what to do when they get there. And then, we head to our...
We, after warm-ups, we go to home base. There are letters and numbers. The students sit where the letters and numbers intersect. It is easier for Mr. Lestage to take attendance.
Right, and we don't waste time, right? We get right to it. We see who's there. We don't need to do a whole roll call, and they get ready for their day. So up next, we have, that's just what they would look like as they come into the gym there, they sit, we've got the board set up, and that's how we do a quick attendance. Forty minutes goes by fast, so we obviously try and get right to our activity for the day. So up next, I believe, we have Aubrey and Rose. Oops, sorry, jumped in here. Students, too, when they come to gym, we're trying to do some accountability, right? Participation's a big part, fourth and fifth grade, they're going through lots of different growth. We're trying to get them prepared, so making sure they're wearing the correct shoes. Obviously, we have sick and injured students at times, and then, we do need some timeout penalties, right? Things come up. We're working on our sportsmanship as being good teammates and good classmates here. So we have a little section called "On the Bench" in the gym, where if, for some reason, something comes up, they fill out a form for me, they have a little accountability for it. If needed, they write down something maybe they missed that day, or they're able to explain it to a family member, and then they have that kind of turned in for me, so I can keep track of kind of who's doing what in gym class. Then we have our plan for the day. Girls?
So, after we do home base, we come back, after the warm-up, suddenly come back, he explains the activity, and he does the muscle and bone of the week. And this helps him go, like, go through the activities and tells us what to do, and it keeps the schedule on point and on line. Speaking of the muscles and bones, let's talk about it. The muscle and bone of the week is where we learn about how muscles and bones work and how to take care of them. This is important to keep our bodies safe. I enjoy this lesson.
The next few slides are just some examples. I have these out on the bulletin board, and then we kind of go over it in class. It relates, obviously, to any activity that they're doing, but we started at the head, and we've worked our way down some of the major bones and bodies, and then we try and connect it to protective gear that you wear, ways to kind of warm up our body, cool down our body, and keep our bodies safe. So these are just some examples of stuff they see each class, and then we kind of talk about it quick, and then we get into our activity there that you could see on the day's plan. So, fifth grade here, and then we've got Cam and Dez. Fifth grade started with a basketball unit at the beginning of the year, so these guys are going to talk a little bit about how that unit went.
One of the skills that we have learned out of the three is shooting, and another skill is dribbling. Sam, well, I'm going to continue with Cam. So, what he said, we did shooting and dribbling, we also did passes, and then we did some mini-games.
See those mini-games on the next slide. So we use these visuals right in the beginning. A big part of me this year that I've enjoyed is my classroom background. I obviously know kids need very many different ways of learning an activity. When I was in gym class or in class growing up, you know, we did a lot of talking, which you can tell I'm very much passionate about doing right now. But they need a visual, right? We use videos, we use backgrounds, they can refer back to these activities and games, they can read it for themselves, but giving them multiple opportunities to learn the lesson and know what to do, we try to adapt into the class that they see these, they talk about it, they ask questions, and then they can obviously go back to it if they need it when we're doing these little mini lessons here. Then, fourth grade.
Fourth grade, we were working on soccer for our unit, and some of the things what we did were passing, dribbling, and shooting the ball. And also, we did some mini-games, like 2v2s, 3v3s, 4v4s, and then, like, you run around the cone, and then you get the ball and try scoring.
See some of those activities. Again, very similar setup for the basketball unit, but the visuals, the gameplay, and some different variations that they can do with that. So after these units, we obviously, coming from the classroom again, there's no test for these types of things. You're obviously looking at ability levels, so I had the students this year do an exit ticket at the end of the unit for each group. So, Fleming, if you could just open up the soccer one there, and just click on the responses there. The questions, I think if you click that blue link on the bottom, it should show you the results. Yep. And then, just the response in the middle there. So the questions weren't anything too crazy. It asked kind of just their feelings on soccer before we did anything, so you can see there, and it was just not if you're good at it, not if you feel like your skills are awesome, it was just, do you like it or not? And then, that same question was asked them after the unit. And if you're all familiar with bar graphs, you're wanting to see the way it's going there, to see if they're enjoying it more or liking it more. I broke it then down by the different skills. So obviously, they talked about the dribbling skills before and after, and so on and so forth. So we went through each skill, and that was great feedback for me, knowing maybe the lesson I used this year wasn't great, maybe there was something that they didn't quite master, I should have spent more time on. So those questions went on and on, and at the end, the main questions were, you know, did your appreciation of soccer change? Did you learn anything new? We had a ton of soccer and basketball stars that play in leagues and different groups, so having them give me feedback that they maybe learned something new. And then, they're obviously trying to rate themselves on how they put in their best effort, their preparation, their performance, sportsmanship, all the things that we look for each class. So they also had the final opportunity to share some comments, hopefully related to soccer, basketball. They had some tips from me as well in there, personal wise, which is fun to read, but they mainly gave good feedback, which is going to help me for next year's unit if and when I decide to use it again. And then, it brings us to where we're at presently right now. Both grades now combined for the fitness. If you're aware, Gray's does an annual Turkey Trot, where we are able to showcase our running, but it's also a fun tradition that kids can walk, jog, and obviously compete if they'd like to. So we're on the first component of the physical fitness there, the five main ones we will go through. Cardiovascular fitness is the first one that we're at, so who's got that one there? Is that Ethan? Dez? All right, you guys again, go for it.
We learned five competence of heart-related physical fitness. First one's cardiovascular endurance, second one's muscular endurance, muscular strength, flexibility, and body composition.
So which one are we focusing on right now? What have we been doing?
Cardiovascular endurance.
And what does that have to do with? What have we talked about?
Heart rate and breathing.
Good, our heart and our lungs, right? So fortunately for you guys, I put you through the wringer, right? And we've been working on what little test to try it out here?
Like, pacer. So, the pacer is like, see how long you can go without stopping, and it progressively gets harder and harder. And we also went out to the track a couple times to see how, to take a couple laps and stop it.
So obviously, each part we go through, we talk about, there's little videos that we've included with it there, and then that's the targeted thing. We did some movement circuit around the gym, where they started off light and did different activities, progressed towards the track, and then, obviously, the Turkey Trot. We then have moved into our cool-down, trying to enforce that. Warm-ups, great to get their bodies ready for gym class, but also the cool-down process for their recovery. They know that they're targeting areas that they work, they're old enough now to know, right? If they're not using their arms in gym class, they might not need to stretch them out. But today, they use their legs quite a bit in the pacer, so they were going around and trying to focus on a cool-down to recover their legs. And again, those stations are around the whiteboards, and they have visuals and videos to kind of help them out with that. So we're getting to the end here, but this is, again, a day in the life. The fitness booklet here, those are the four groups that we're going to be targeting that go through those five categories, the push-up, the curl-up, and the sit-and-reach. So they're coming up with a score right now. They're going to give themselves a goal, and we're going to do this again in May and June. I've asked them to target on one goal to work on, and they're really trying to focus on not just saying, "I'm going to be better at it," right? They're coming up with a targeted, specific plan on what they're going to do to get better at. And the main thing I told you guys is to pick a category that, what? Is it easy for you or what?
Hard.
Hard.
Hard for you, right? Oftentimes, we pick one that we're really good at, and a lot of them are really good with the pacer. They like to run. I told them, I stood there in front, and I tried to bend down and touch the floor, and I said, "Your gym teacher is not flexible." So if I was to pick one to work on, the sit-and-reach is one that I'm going to go with, and it's going to be hard for me. So I tried to get them out of their comfort zone. They're going to be finishing this up by winter break here, and then we'll recap again at the end of the year, and I told them, "It's going to be on them," right? It's not just gym class with Mr. Lestage. It's a life lesson to be working on our fitness and health, so they're going to work on those goals to hopefully accomplish them by the end of the year. So that's just some examples of the Pacers test. If you remember the beep test, if you ever did that as kids, it's ingrained in their brains right now. And now, this is how we wrap it up at the end of class.
We do a whistle routine. One whistle means sit down and stop what you're doing. Two whistle is drop any equipment. And three whistles is skip eye contact. The whistles get us attention, so that Mr. Lestage doesn't have to scream across the gym and lose his voice.
Very true. Right? And it's pretty straightforward, right? Everyone knows what to do, sit down, take the knee. It's a big gym, right? Things echo, and no one wants to be yelled at to stop something, but they've got it down now where it's kind of like boom, 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 and they know we're either changing the activity, it's the end of class, or there's an important message to get them. So they've bought into that, and all classes have done a great job with that. Who's wusah there? Go for it, Ethan. What's the wusah zone in gym class?
We have wusah, so if you're having like a tough time, or, um, like, you're not having a good time in gym, you can go and sit on like a mat, you know, like, where you take a break on the bench, and you can look at these and doing like some breathing methods or something like that.
So we've talked, sportsmanship's going to be a big part of it. We're at that age where they're competitive, right? They're competitive against themselves and each other, but we're working on ways, and sometimes we have bad days, and they know that. I don't ask questions if they're in the wusah zone. I don't stop and question why they're going over there. The kids in class don't question that. They know, you know, there's some books over there, there's some activities, and then, when they're ready, come back in, no questions asked. So it's trying to put that accountability on them to keep themselves in check as they get older, especially in sports. You know, the refs get in each other, they're at the coaches, right? Parents are on the sidelines. They need to obviously control themselves first before we bring that part of sports into our lives.
So we have the five-star expectations. We have behavior, effort, preparedness, and sportsmanship, and five. These are the things we need to accomplish during gym class. And what I like about this is that we get a prize for second and third.
Always a prize, right? No, just kidding. So, yeah, each class, they can earn up to five stars. We just finished term one, so if you look on the next page there, putting some teachers on last year, but they had accountability with it. A lot of kids, believe it or not, that 10th place class sat in dead silence when they saw that they were the last class, and they turned around and actually had their best class all year after that. So it's doing something. Now they're buying into it a little bit more. I told them, if all 10 classes tie, everyone's going to earn it, right? I'm not going to be tie-breakers in that sense. They're all capable of it, and those are the five things at the top. Every class, I marked down what they get, we tally it up, and at the end of the term, they kind of think back together. So it's putting it, obviously, on themselves, but then, as a class as well. So no, Mrs. Mauricio did not win grade four because she was my partner for 10 years, but they did pull it off. So I show it to the kids, I show it to the teachers, and they're ready for term two here, clean slate, and hopefully earning those five stars each class. And the last part there, I think I added this one at the end of the day today. We just did the cool-down, we just finished that part in the unit. So those are the whiteboards around the gym, they've got those visuals, they know, warm-up in the beginning, cool-down at the end, and hopefully target an area that we were working on in class. And then, I just add some photos for you, seeing what they've done throughout the year. There you go, Dez. Good, good. Remember, make them laugh. Out with the track there, some of the posters and things around. I actually organized upstairs, you've heard of it, the Gray's upstairs, right? Wild stuff. Inventoryed and all that, the basketball, that's the little wusah area there on the right we talked about. Some early September games, and then, here they are, full-fledged pacer mode, trying their best for their cardio. So that's where we're at. We're building an exciting program here, trying not to do, obviously, the same thing in each grade, so that the fourth graders then have something new in fifth grade, and the fifth graders this year are ready to move on to the middle school and advance those skills. We're going to continue to work hard together, and I've got a great group of role models here that took time, that volunteered to come out and help me tonight. These are the types of students that I'm having share their experiences and what I'm looking for, to be that good role model, that good sport, and good friend in class. So I appreciate these guys and their families for taking them out tonight, Dr. Sullivan for allowing me to do this, and obviously, the admin team for, again, putting me in this position. I'm very much enjoying it, and we're going to continue to hopefully move the program forward. Thank you for having us.
Awesome. Any questions from the committee, from Mr. Lestage, Dr. Sullivan, or our students?
I just would just echo, great work, right? Stepping in and taking over, great work with the program. Just that space over the gym alone, I'm sure there are things up there that are older than several people combined ages in here, so, yeah, so, but thank you, this was great.
That's awesome. Great. Moving down, agenda item number five, we have the superintendent update. Oh, you have something to say, Bob? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
The structure that I just saw, very, very impressive, and I can't help but think back to when I was in the fourth grade in Free Turn Elementary and was gym class, and the gym teacher would come out and throw a ball into a pack of us, and then disappear for 30 minutes, and then come back and blow his whistle, and we get all right in. So that's how it used to be. Obviously, it's not like that anymore. There's a lot of lessons that are being taught, and it's very impressive.
Thanks, Bob. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
I'm sure the fourth and fifth graders want to get home and do their homework.
Yes, please. You guys are certainly, thank you, and thank you to the parents for coming out. You guys don't have to stick around for the rest of the fun, but we really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought you said students. Good to go.
All right, agenda item number five here. Superintendent Strauss, good evening, and we are ready whenever things wind down. You want to start? You're more than welcome to. Appreciate you.
Sure. Thank you very much, guys.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Lestage, and to all our students. I think it's an example, Bobby kind of touched on it, it's an example of how we can create excellence regardless of the program, using data, using motivating, motivating skills rather than just rolling out a ball. So nice job. Nice job, a very nice job to all the students. So I'm going to keep this short, and I'm also going to combine it a little bit with the health and wellness meeting that we had, so I'm going to put it all together. I received a letter from the Pan-Mass Challenge thanking us and the communities for all the work that was going in August. I want to thank the police, the fire, all our first responders, Greg Goodwin and his team, the community in general. The Pan-Mass Challenge gave a check to Dana Farber for $72 million this year, which is a wonderful, a wonderful amount of money for research. We all have been impacted, some of us more so recently, by knowing someone with cancer, and so I think it's a perfect time to talk about it with Jimmy V's Foundation and everything going on this week. So $72 million is wonderful. So when we talk about all the work that it takes to put this event on, and we're just one stop along the way, it's well worth it. So, class size list you hell have, it's been provided to you. Senior breakfast is tomorrow at the middle school at 8:00 a.m. You heard Camille talk a little bit about the breakfast program. I wanted to add a little bit to it. We now are serving approximately 440 students per day for breakfast. We were, and Camille talked about the high school, obviously, that did not include middle school numbers, which are a little bit lower than the high school, which is unusual, but it's still, we're averaging, you know, around 50. And then, the primaries, obviously, are a little bit more. But that's 430 students that we have not dealt with or have not given breakfast to, you know, previously. With that, our backpack program continues to do wonderful things. We're at around 117 to 118 families, and I know the messages that I've received from families, I can't speak for the principals, have just been, "Thank you, thank you, thank And I know the messages that I've received from families, I can't speak for the principals, have just been, thank you, thank you, thank you. I have to thank Craig Cabral and Liz Borges for the work at the food pantry. They're just fantastic. Anything we've needed, they've helped us with. So that's been a real joy to see from where we started last year. With just a few families to where we are now. So we're excited about that. The dental clinics that we have here in district are going very well. We had 58 students at grades who were screened recently. Obviously, students are not just simply pulled out of class. There are approvals from parents and parents are requesting opportunities. This clinic doesn't just clean, they will help refer to other dentists who will give discounted or free, whether it is x-rays or any other kind of dental work. So that's a real positive. It will happen at all the schools. I believe it's already happened at AES, correct? Bethany? FES is next in the middle school. We're not doing it yet at the high school. All of our high school, all of our nurses across the district are now CPR certified to teach. That is monumental for us because it allows Terry in terms of doing PD. That's one more option. Teachers can take some PD on CPR, which I think is absolutely necessary. Hydration station is tentatively set for winter break at AES, so we're excited about that. Bethany's very excited. The nurses incredibly excited. The front doors at AES have been installed and look fantastic. So we are looking, once everything is finished by break, we are looking to have a meet and greet with any of our Lakeville residents who want to see inside the building. We're not just gonna invite people during the day when they're kids, but we'll figure out a day whether we do it on a Saturday or some other time. One opportunity to allow the community to come and see where their money went, which was very well spent. Also, I think it's important, we have now partnered with Convenient MD in Plymouth, which the nurses now have vouchers for free sports physicals and free physicals. So if a parent is looking to get a physical, they can now, and there's financial concerns, they can go to a school nurse who will give them a physical. Convenient MD is in Plymouth. That's the closest one right now. So that's a real positive. Deirdre is not here this evening, but I did want to report that the budget process has been outlined and we are well underway to begin having our meetings and discussions and within all of the leadership team. We are excited to sit and we're doing a little bit differently this year in terms of coming together and having meetings. But we are, we've begun those conversations, so we're excited. Play was great. I do want to commend Mr. Ledwith and the Ponacook Choir for performing carols at the event, the tree lighting event this weekend. They did a great job. So that's where we are.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Strauss?
I think the breakfast program is fantastic. Is it something that we're able to continue going forward? How does that work?
So previously, the state, the Commonwealth, excuse me, provided free breakfast starting after COVID. And because of numbers and some reasons I don't know, we did not have that program at the middle school and high school. John Burke asked a question. I remember it vividly. I actually did not know we did not serve at the middle school and high school. He asked a question. We went to Andrea Fay, who's our head of food services, and now we have it in and it will continue. It is free for students and it is my goal to continue it. It looks like the Commonwealth is going to continue it with the number of students across the state who are struggling with food insecurity. The state does not appear to be on a path to change that. So with that, we then can add middle school and high school. So it will be pre-K to 12 across the board, which is good.
Just to add to that, so just to clarity, we are required to offer it at one of the schools. And we wanted to have parity as we continue on. That is a concern that I do have. I'm all support for having a breakfast program, but if the state pulls the funding, that comes back on us, right? So that's something that we need to keep in mind in the budget, even though that, I don't see any indication of it being pulled away. But if the state pulls away that funding, we definitely would need to look at that. Because of the fact that even during that time period, there was a cost to breakfast.
Correct.
If you remember, it seems like ages ago, there was a form and if there was financial ability, you could fill out the form and it was free or reduced, but then there was a cost to it, right, to families. I'm in full support of the district as part of the operating budget, but we just got to keep it in mind that it is being funded right now by the state.
100% funded.
Yep.
Previously, it was free and reduced students and then other students would be paying a particular amount. And it started, I don't remember what school it started, FES, I don't know, because of numbers of students who were on free and reduced. So with that, it became very unfair. I can't speak for Superintendent Maderas, but I'm sure that was part of his thinking, that we needed to make this equitable. And then my approach as a middle school and former high school principal was, we need to do this across the board because we have high school students who need to eat. So it's worked out well.
I will say, I think we've done a better job marketing it because I remember the first couple of years, we'd get 10 or 15 kids, right?
Yeah, we marketed it pretty hard.
So good.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
This one other question, so related to the physicals. It's not a form that has to be filled out. There's no data entry that's passed on to other organizations. We're just passing on the free physical, what have you, and that person is interacting with them, right? There's no data that we have to turn over as a result of this if someone takes one of those, correct?
Meaning how many or who are the people that are getting free?
Yeah, I just, data privacy is, I just wanted to make sure.
It's no different than someone who goes to get a physical. We don't, all we get back is the physical form.
Okay.
What this is doing, Convenient MD decided that they wanted to provide opportunities because there are families who say, no, we can't go get a physical for sports because we can't afford it. This is providing that. And the nurses will ask no questions.
Good question. Thank you for that. Any other questions for Mr. Strauss at this time?
Yeah, sorry. I have a question. Windows and doors. All the windows are in?
All the windows are in.
Front doors are in?
Front doors are in.
Date, when the doors will be completed?
We're hoping that over Christmas break, so we're expecting a delivery. And as long as that delivery is on target, which it is anticipated to be, then that is the plan.
Okay. And those doors are the?
Final.
I think, and these are the outside doors, right?
Correct.
Okay, so there's still outside doors that need to be?
These are, so there's three sets that are actually courtyard doors. Those are interior doors.
Okay.
So out of the 11, there's seven sets of doors that are left to be put in Assawamsted. And they're all expected to be delivered and done over the holiday break.
Okay, so it is a combination of exterior doors plus?
Correct. So they've actually come in and, they've actually come in and abated them and boarded them up. So they're all ready to go. Once the doors get here, a lot of that pre-leg work has been done. So we'll hopefully be able to just get those in really quickly.
Got it.
And we got the exterior doors, the front major doors in earlier than we thought.
Okay.
Yes.
When's the last time that we sent out an update to?
Friday.
We sent one out on Friday. I did let the public know that there's now two sets of locked doors about the extra security. And that's really all the facts that I had at this time. So that's what we shared this week. Once we have the confirmation of the delivery and more of an anticipated deadline, we'll send out another update.
Perfect, thank you.
We always send them out on Friday mornings.
So that's my fault. I didn't send it to the school committee, so I apologize.
I just want to make sure the town is gone.
Yes, the town has gone.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, Mel? Gotcha. All right, agenda item number six, acceptance of minutes. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of 11:15:23.
Almost.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second at this time? I have a second. Any further discussion pertaining to the minutes of 11:15:23? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of 11:15:23, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Pass unanimously. I will entertain the same motion for the executive session minutes of 11:15:23.
Almost.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining at this time? Perfect. Thank you. For that, now going down to agenda item number seven, other presentations to the school committee. First up, we do have an ESL program update with Ms. Fleming.
Oh, that's it. I was looking at my. So tonight I have with us our ELE, TEEDR ELEs, which are English language educators. Sandy Doe and Marina Almeida have joined us and they're gonna go through a presentation and introduce another very special guest tonight to help round out a presentation of our ESL program.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Sandy Doe. I teach English language education to our English learners and multilingual learners at Assawamsted Elementary and Freetown Elementary. This is my fifth year in the district and it's home. I love it. And...
My name's Marina Almeida and I'm the district EL teacher for grades four through 12. I teach at Grace, FLS, and ARHS, and this is my second year with the district.
Okay, so here's a breakdown of our district's numbers for English language education, multilingual learner education. Right now, there are 31 active EL students from grades K through 12. Four of these students are opted out of the program, which means that the parents have decided that their children should not or will not receive direct services from ELE teachers. But they are required to take the access test and be a part of the numbers of our program. They get any extra services from other areas, specialists, interventionists, whatever they may need. Some do need more than others. There are several reasons why, which are personal reasons to the families. We have 10 languages spoken and down at the end of the presentation, you'll be able to see all of those languages. Nine students are being progress monitored, which means they're former English learners. We have one at AES and the rest are four through 12. So the girl that I have at AES, she exited the program in second grade. She was in first grade and second grade. By the end of second grade, she was flying high. She's wonderful. 245 service minutes per cycle is the required time that we are required to spend with most of the kids. We do our very best in, you know, with the two of us servicing grades K through 12 to hit that target and we give them what we can. So most of our time limits with the kids are 45-minute blocks, three to five times a week. That's pretty much my schedule. I work days one and three at AES and days two and four at FES. So one week I'll be at one school three days and the next week I'll be at that school two days and vice versa. I would love to be there every day, but I'm not and that's all I'm gonna say. Two EL educators, we are here and this is, you know, it's not like we're at one school or at one grade level. We're spread around the whole district. There's 10 miles between the two elementaries. And there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot involved there. We have a combination of pull-out and push-in services. Marina, she basically pushes in at the higher grade levels. Me, where my students are the younger, early elementary, I mainly pull out students. They're usually at a lower proficiency level, which is best for students with a lower proficiency level so that they feel confident in practicing their English. They learn the skills that they need to go into the classroom and feel confident and be a part of discussions and understand the vocabulary, pre-teaching, post-teaching, you know, all of that is involved in the pull-out services. The new curriculums that we are learning this year are the Wonders curriculum and the Amplify ELA. The Wonders curriculum is the elementary K through, K through?
Five.
Five. I teach K through three, so I was just. So anyway, so we are doing a lot of PD and learning about the components that we will be using next year when we do use that program, whether it is pull-out or push-in, to work with our kids in the four domains, speaking, listening, reading, writing. Okay, moving on.
Here are the components of the English language education program in our district. We focus our instruction on literacy and language skills that will support our ELLs and MLLs in their general educational classes. Access for ELLs measures progress in the domains of listening, speaking, writing, and reading.
Okay, so this is our access administration process. This year, the testing window runs from January 4th, so we'll get back from Christmas vacation, get all of the materials in the buildings. We have to sort through it and get our testing schedule ready. January 4th through February 16th is the deadline. Usually, we finish within three weeks or so. But that is, that is the window. And access test score results or score results will be reported to schools and districts in sometime, I think they changed it to April this year. So they're getting a little bit earlier as we move forward in time.
Purposeful instruction of English learners. As EL teachers, we plan and collaborate with classroom teachers to ensure our instruction matches with classroom instruction and individual student needs. By interweaving WIDA's English Language Development Standards with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's English Language Education and the Common Core State Standards, we teach both language and content language together.
And these are just some pictures of what we've been doing this year, what mostly what the earlier elementary students, some of the work that they've been doing. And incorporating iReady into EL instruction is really important, too. In K through eighth grade, it begins with using data from the diagnostic results that are done within each grade level. And we use those results to create units of study that tailor our instruction to the student needs individually and in small groups. We use this to help us with the needs of our ELLs and it gives us good tools to use with those students in those four domains of speaking, listening, reading, and writing. The iReady reading and math program provides EL support tools that allow us to align our instruction with district and grade levels.
Those are directly linked in the iReady online platform, so it's nice to just be able to go into each student after they're, they take an assessment and we can drill down into them, the each student, and give individualized supports for them.
We use a lot of that data directly, you know, on the daily with our kids. And the lessons can be assigned by the classroom teachers as well as the EL teachers.
Regarding Wonders and the Amplify ELA, our lessons are tailored to grade levels as well as English language proficiency levels. EL instruction is provided using scaffolding techniques so students can master skills as their individual levels of English proficiency and academic learning. Instruction aligns with grade level curriculum and Common Core State Standards as well as WIDA, the English Language Development Standard Frameworks that we use.
And parent communication and family engagement is ongoing and happens in a variety of ways. Here's an example of an ELE monthly newsletter that was sent home electronically and also in, there's always a translated version. Usually, when I send them an email, I will, I have four languages that I send it in, English, Portuguese, Spanish, and Gujarati, which is an Indian language. And here is an example of the English and also the Gujarati translated version. In the emails, when I send a parent email, the email itself is also translated into four languages. And each section has what they need if they need to look at the translated version. It's always there.
And there's 10 languages in that bottom corner there.
But we have four that we actually need translation for.
So we do have one EL family here, and Delaney here has joined us. She's from grade five. And she works at, and she works at Grace. That would be lovely, right? She's a student at Grace. Now, how is your English language education supported benefited you since last year?
I learned more about writing, which has improved a lot this year, and punctuation.
What are some of your favorite things to do with Ms. Doe, which you had for a few years, and then with me?
I had a few favorite things to do with Ms. Doe, but my favorite would probably be to read a book with her and then answer her questions. be to read a book with her and then answer the questions.
What was that book?
Squanto.
Those are good ones also. All right. Will you give an example of how your EL time helps you in your classrooms this year?
Once she comes in, sometimes I don't do my best work on everything I do, and she kind of catches that and tells me, tries to tell me to do better on what I'm, what the assignment is.
Awesome. Anything else you want to add? Are you good?
You went on that field trip.
You did an awesome job.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so this is our final. There are three important links to learn more about English Language Education in Massachusetts, and you can always click on any one of these on your, you know, Google them. The first one is WEEDA, where we get our curriculum guidelines, our English Language Development Standards, proficiency levels and assessment that we use in our daily education. The next one is MATSOL. It's where the teachers of English learners get the best research practices and professional development. And also DESI, of course, provides state requirements, compliance, and guidelines for EL instruction that we have to follow.
And that concludes our presentation. Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
I do want you to note that, thank you, did you guys have any, I'm sorry.
No, absolutely, that's fine. Real quick, question from the committee. We'll go Stephen and Steve.
Quick question on the newsletter. What platform is that?
Google Translate.
It's Google.
And I use the, I use like a slide, like Google Slides, and I also have a degree in graphic design, so I put it all together. And I, how I do it is, I'll translate, I'll write it in English, then I translate it into the language, and then I translate it back into English to make sure that it makes sense.
Yeah.
And if any teachers need to know how to do that, I would be very happy to show them, you know, how to actually make sure it's not that difficult.
Just my plug for smores. I don't get any kickbacks from this. But that's something that the district should entertain because it translates in multiple language for all students. I think just not only EL newsletter, but a newsletter coming from schools at all grade levels. Second, on the second slide, you said two teachers or wrote in there, two EL educators at max capacity.
I was going to, I was going to.
I was going to talk about that.
I put that on that slide on purpose because.
Well, I picked it up.
Because right now, we taught last year in the, I had put in for another EL educator, and it did get cut out of the process pretty early because we weren't at a, in a position that we were maxed out. But we have picked up more families this year, and the progress monitoring load in and of itself, Marina has spent an inordinate amount of the first part of her year making sure that we're meeting progress monitoring requirements and seeing those kids and making sure they're settled in their classes and that they're still being successful with their grades and with their original assessments and so forth. So we are, we are honestly maxed out. One more student puts us over. We were at a point for about three weeks that Marina was actually putting in some additional time for us. Because we had a student that came in September, an unfortunate situation was we had another student then leave, and so we have been able to balance out her time again, but we are definitely at max capacity, so you will see an EL educator on the budget lines this year.
And Marina has 20 FEL, former English learners, that she has to keep track of, not has to, but well, she has to.
And they're monitored for you.
Keep in mind that it's not, we always talk about smaller class sizes, and that's a goal. This is about compliance. So if we have our special education lens of compliance, we have ELL compliance, and we are at the max. We get two more students in February, which is the typical time, because it tends to be vacations, then we're going to be, you know, by June in trouble. So it's, you will see it again on the budget. I'm just putting it out there right now that that is not an option.
And you might go to what happens if we get another one right now?
I might. Yeah, sure.
And, and so Marina and I have had, well, depending on the age, Sandy has a little bit of capacity in her schedule.
Yeah.
But if they came into that fourth through 12th grade, we'd have to work on posting for a part-time position to cover the hours or having Marina extend her hours again, which I do not want to stretch her capacity and her mental balance. But she has been more than willing, and she just has really done a great job of loving our students.
Which is compensating.
Yeah.
Right.
Of course.
And just real quick, the 31 active, you mentioned the four opt-outs are included in that count?
No, they're not included in that number.
Oh, I thought you said seven.
She did, but they're not.
So that means the nine are also not included in the.
Correct. The 31 are active.
So that's why we're.
They're only, the opt-outs are only included for DESI, they get tested, they're not serviced by us.
Okay.
And we still monitor them.
Yes, we still monitor them.
Steve.
First, great job, and I just wanted to say, great job to the young lady that came up and.
Awesome job.
Delaney.
Very well done. There are probably more than half the people in here, so great job there. For the budget, can we get a year-over-year comparison as far as what we have done the last three years for the number of students that are in here? Point of clarification, you said the monitored FEL, is that 20?
I.
Twenty-one.
That are being monitored right now.
Twenty-one, yes. I have one, she has 20.
But then if you add our opt-outs, we have more.
Right.
So what is the nine students being progress monitored at four to 12?
I need to get an updated list of our monitors.
Okay, so do that, go for the budget. What is the breakdown of the 31 students between K to three and four to 12?
I have 21 active EL students.
Okay.
I have 10.
If I can just, how many of those are, how many at FES and how many at AES?
I have, I have, I think I have 12 at FES and nine at AES.
And the scheduling for Marina right now is tricky because of the three buildings and having time to get from building to building and find parking and so forth. The transition time is a part of, a piece of the puzzle. I mean, you'll hear more about this in my ideal world, you know, we hire someone that has some flexible capacity and we go where our, our numbers need us to go. So for example, our largest group of students right now is in seventh grade, so they will be at the middle school for another year, and then they'll be moving to the high school. We have also a group of second graders that will be two grades in a few years, so that will increase those numbers. So as, so giving you numbers to numbers, Steve, is going to look odd because really looking at when they've transitioned to other buildings is what's causing some of the hiccups this year.
And it's so fluid.
But, and I did in October give like, I gave growth numbers, but I'll do a little more tracking into the back years.
Because that's going to be important for budget discussions overall, right? So the reasons why. And I think it was show trending, show compliance, that's, those are different things that we just need to bring to the table.
Yeah, and you're looking for just strictly the numbers versus service minutes. I mean, the service minutes kind of.
I am, I am looking for where we were three years ago, where we're at today. I remember a point in time that we only had one, right, in here. So I did think we need to look at that so that we can appropriately advocate for the right resources.
Right.
My last question is, how much are we relying on outside support services for language assistance?
I don't.
We have two translators at conferences tomorrow, so we use a translation service.
Okay.
I also have contacted an ASL service, not because we have an EL student that is ASL, but we do have a family at the high school that does have an ASL parent.
Thank you. Before we get to John, I just want to piggyback on one of Steve's comments that he made just revolving around kind of showing us that historical data. I'd love for us to to just take the next step this year when going into budget negotiations or budget kind of planning here, and just supplying kind of MCAS data to support our need if possible, right? I know in our last meeting, we did have a great MCAS presentation buy you spoke, so I think the more we can tie it to data, the better off we're going to be. So just a thought there. John?
Yeah, just a quick question. Is the majority of this instruction one-to-one?
No. No, it's not. So on the schedule, if you think about the scoring for access scoring at the above one to 2.5, they, they do tend to need more one-on-one, but we are able to group them in like ranges. So for example, a 2.3 and a 2.2 or a two and a 2.3 leveled student might be pulled together. It is also often that Marina will be in a class pushing in with four students in that math class.
Okay.
And so she is providing push-in service time for all of them, and that's working with the students and the teacher to go, what, how can I be another, you know, teacher or co-teacher in this classroom? How can I provide service to the students? So depending on their, where their needs are, we, we do try to get as much one-on-one time for our highest needs students as possible, and those would be those that score at 2.5 and below. But as they creep toward that three and a half, they're becoming more and more independent, and by four and 4.2 is when they can be considered for exiting the program. So Delaney is sounding and working wonderfully, so I don't know how long we get to hold her.
Forever.
She will, she is going to be a leader wherever she goes, so.
Thank you.
Harry, are you aware of any, any student who goes home to a parent or grandparents where English is not spoken at all?
At all. Well, we do have a couple of families that require the translation services that do not speak English. And actually, it's commoner, it's more common than you would think where a student is more fluent and the parents don't speak the language, don't speak English, and the kids will translate for the parents. We have one student, first grader, that I screened at the beginning of the year, and he, you wouldn't even know, his fluency is spot-on, but his parents require translation. So it's, it's, it's all flexible, it's case by case.
And many of our families speak both languages at home, so there is dual language, multilanguage homes, and that's wonderful. That's what we want to see continue, right? That's where our students benefit from being continually immersed in both languages because it is a travesty to completely immerse them in English and not have them retain their, their home language.
But it's also important, going back to your statement, Steve, about smores.
Smores.
What did I say?
Smores.
Right, smores. The idea that we need to have all paperwork in this district available in multiple languages.
Yeah.
So any form that goes home, it should not be a question of difficulty. It should be, if you use it, great. If you don't need it, great. And, and so we will get there. We are doing more and more, but part of it is because of the numbers. I know you said years ago, you remember one. I know when I first got here, one of my first questions was how many languages are spoken, and the information that I had received when I first started was three. So now we're talking 10, and that's the year and a half. So, you know, it's a constant, it's part of our work in terms of diversity coalition and allowing people to feel a sense of belonging.
Great.
Great. Thank you.
The chair, just real quick.
Yeah.
Since we have them on the spot, is this the same group that we're going to be talking about, I am 10A? I'm just wondering if we take that now in the agenda.
Well, yes. I mean, I'm primarily giving the information. Marina is the person that has been having her hands in the middle of it, so.
I'm all for taking 10A out of order and just kind of knocking that one out if that's, makes it.
Just to keep them in the hot seat for a few more.
Yeah.
So you can go home early. Look at them now.
Ready for that?
Yep.
Oh, I don't get to go home earlier, though. All right, so we have been in the process, through our progress review with the state, they did give us quite the hand slap for not having curriculum at the secondary level. That's, was presented last year in the spring. And so during the summer, we had a team of people get together and work with us to look at current curriculum that meets the secondary learning requirements for WEEDA and the state. So this group of people got together, and I always appreciate people giving their summertime. A few of these are administrators, so they had less choice, but we had Marina join us and then Kristin Lippincott from the high school as a high school ELA teacher, and then Katie Shidi from the middle school as a middle school ELA teacher join us. We went through a similar process to when we vetted the ELA program. The team got together. I researched state-approved curriculums. I'll tell you, that was probably the biggest hurdle because there are not any state-approved curriculum sources, so I called districts and went to meetings and reached out to our, the person that did our progress monitoring, and to no avail, I came up with a very limited choices as far as curriculum that is out there. In August, we reviewed the curriculum. We determined two to be tested out in the, in the schools. Marina has been spending time in those programs and has been working with several students with a unit from each of them to try them out. By January, we need to have made a decision regarding purchase. That's why you're hearing about it tonight. I already spoke to the obstacles. We are also, I didn't add in the previous, it's a student voice, it's just you've been getting feedback from the students as to what they found engaging, what they liked and didn't like about each of them. There is both written and online materials for both curriculum, so I'm sure Marina will add pieces to that as well. So I-LIT is the first one through SAVIS, and I won't read the bullet points, but without, you don't have to read the bullet points, but just give like a quick summary of how you're feeling about I-LIT and how the kids are feeling.
Okay. That has been the favorite of the students. They seem to be more engaged with the readings because it's things that they can relate to. For instance, we're currently reading about how we can see, why we can see, how our eyes function. They find that interesting versus the other curriculum, the HLM curriculum. For instance, the reading material is why can't, why teenagers don't like to sleep. They already know about that, okay? They don't need to read more about it. So they actually found this material more interesting. They also find it more interesting for the simple factor that there's reading for all different subjects, so science, math, the typical ELA readings, and then social studies as well. So that's why I-LIT seems to be the way to go. But HLM is also a good curriculum. It focuses, focuses more on the verb conjugations, that kind of thing. However, our high school students don't need help with verb conjugations. They know how to conjugate verbs, so they prefer the I-LIT because they're actually learning material that they would learn in a regular classroom with the extra vocabulary as backup to make them feel more confident when they're actually learning this material in the classroom.
Both platforms have robust reporting, they have easy access, they have the ability to adjust lessons and, and create within the site itself. They both have both written and online. They both address vocabulary comprehension, so both of them meet a lot of the same bullet points as you're looking down that, that row. This is just a spattering of some of the pieces in I-LIT. You can see some of those books and novels have some engaging discovers and topics. And then the other one is Hoot and Mifflin, so it's English 3D is the platform, HMH, but that's close to the company. And they have, again, it's very, it's very robust. It would meet the needs, both of these are going to meet the needs and meet the requirements of WEEDA and the state. The team was actually split, that's an example of their data. The team was actually like very well divided. It was one of those scoring pieces that, you know, one scored 52 and one scored 48 on the two. So they were within like four or five points on scoring, the scoring rubric for everybody. And like two people thought I-LIT was better when we vetted it, when we looked at it, and four people thought English 3D was going to be better. We actually had predicted that English 3D would be well-received by the students, but as it's been rolled out, we've, we've heard differently. Ironically, when it comes down to cost, it also is the lesser of the two costs. This purchase would be hard copy materials for 10 students per level. It's by levels versus grade, and so that would suffice for this first year, probably first year and a half. We'd have to order some additional written materials. The online access is annual, that is not the heavy lift for the, I mean, that's, that's not a big dollar amount when we're talking funds. That is not the heavy lift for the, I mean, that's, that's not a big dollar amount when we're talking funds for a program. So the professional development also is one time. That is actually spread out, that's a year and a half. I asked for a quote for a year and a half so that the PB could start this year in March and, and through June and then continue through next year. And that would allow time to create our scope and sequence documents, make sure that Marina is well-trained and well-versed in the curriculum. Because she's dabbling in it now, we would start it in September. So that's not an anticipated loss of time for us. It just allows her to have more time with a trained person in the platform to make sure we're using it fully. What I'm finding out with ELA and our EL, our Amplify ELA is that we have this trainer for our sessions for this year, but the teachers already are, they're in it every day and they're enjoying the curriculum so much that the trainer becomes kind of a Q and A session. And how do I find this and how do I tweak this? I'm kind of anticipating the same since Marina has had time in the platform already. But I, I want to budget for it because supporting their immersion into the program is what helps make it successful for our students.
Questions?
Did you bring the curriculum?
I do, I have it back there. Would you like me to get it for you?
We have the, we have the hard copies of the curriculum and we can get those over to you and you can prove them for your enjoyment.
Okay. John, question, sure.
Just curious, our internal IT group, have they seen this or any issue implementing it with our devices?
Yes, they have looked at it and the privacy and the, I run that by them. That's a routine measure. But yes, it's fully accessible. We actually would not have to do a, we could do what we're doing with ClassLink where we do the automatic rostering, but because our, our group is small right now, we probably would do manual rostering just out of ease because I could do that quickly in the summer before the school starts. But they've looked at the security measures on it. So this is I-LIT.
And this is the book you're thinking every couple of years?
Yeah. Yeah. So you love this.
Okay.
And so this order is for.
Thank you.
And each of these.
Thank you.
Why is the hard copy price so low?
Um, well, I have a feeling it's because.
It's hard copies.
It's hard copies, it's like hard bound and they have novels. These are some novel-based English 3D. Yeah. So this is an example of an English 3D book and it's.
Okay.
Which is like you're opening it up, you can kind of see why you might not turn toward it.
Yeah.
Like, oh, it is possible. And we do want the rigor of reading at grade level, but the, this program provides that on-level rigor without the hard copy.
Awesome. Terry, thank you so much for that. Steve, question?
What is the platform we use for K to three or K to five?
Uh, we're using Wonders. Wonders has the.
Built in.
Okay.
Well, they have a separate, and they have a push-in and a pull-out model.
Got it. And, and how is the, I'll say the integration between Wonders and either one of these two programs? Or is it both manual? And I know one of the big things we've talked about is year-over-year that the data follows the students.
So the data would not follow. However, really for our EL students, we would use the access scoring, which breaks it down into their listening and their speaking skills. And then within the fluencies, we, we run the same fluencies that are ran for English, learning English, right? It's their, they have their CVCs and they have their, what are they doing on their diagrams and their, you know, and their, and their written language. So as students progress, we have writing samples, so writing portfolios. And we have the continued work from early bird through the I-ready diagnostics. And these students take the I-ready diagnostic as well. So we have a through line on data, Steve, that I'm not concerned about the direct connection between the two.
Okay.
And I'll tell you that if you pressed me to get one that's pre-K to 12, I would fail because there is not out there.
And have we been on-site to see this in action? I know that's typically part of it in our, in the, I'll say typical course.
So I spoke with people that have used, that use it, both, both pieces. I'm, I can't, I can't validate getting them off of their cycle of service minutes to get them to see it. But I can certainly, over the next month, have them connect up virtually or connect up during planning time with some, with schools that have used it. They're not really that close, unfortunately. They're more Western.
Got it. And if I'm reading between the lines, the recommendation is to go with I-LIT?
Yes.
Okay. I know this is just the first reading. The formal vote comes in there, but I, I don't see any objection, at least from my lens. I can't speak without the committee. The only thing that I would add from a budgetary perspective is, I, I would really outline the difference between, like to me, this is a consumable, right? And something that we have to budget year-over-year, whereas a hard copy textbook is something that.
A class set.
Yeah. So just so that way, when people are looking at the budget can actually really delineate that this is something that we need to plan for year-over-year. Not that we wouldn't hear that from year-over-year, but I think it's just, it's important to articulate the difference.
Right. And some of the hard copy materials are the teacher's manuals and those are not year-to-year. So I will separate those out, no problem.
Thank you. Anything else from Ms. Fleming at this point?
Marina, I'll bring these to you. I'll bring these to you. You're good.
Thank you.
You're not just good, you're amazing.
Aw, thank you so much. It was really nice to see everybody again. Happy holidays to all of you.
You as well. Thank you.
And one more point about the timeline. Did I do you correctly that we needed something by January?
We have to have made a decision by the end of January for progress morning. We don't have to, we have to have purchased by, we have to have our purchase order approved by the end of February for our. They put us on a, like, I tried to drag it out till June and they came back with, oh, no.
So this is something that we need to have our official vote at the next meeting?
Yes.
We'll make sure that gets on the agenda.
Thank you.
I would like to move in the spirit of giving Ms. Floyd to the next before the SIP so that she can go home to her lovely children.
Lovely children.
I want to stay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I'm Martha Floyd. I'm the special ed administrator for pre-K to grade three at Free Town Elementary. I'm really excited to share with you that we, I've been working really diligently with the related service providers and integrated preschool teachers to develop an improved system for screening our preschool role model students. Last year, we developed a questionnaire for parents to complete as part of the application process. And this year, we intend to include an in-person screening that will be held on a Friday in early to mid-March. And then by the end of the first week of April, parents will be informed in writing whether or not their child has been accepted as a role model into the program. Holding a screening day will give us the opportunity to utilize standardized screening assessments and observations by qualified preschool service providers to ensure the students are identified, we identify, will service true role models for our preschool students who require special education. So in the third week of January, we will be posting a notice on the website, social media, and in the Sunday message. This notice will define the integrated preschool program and inform Free Town Lakeville families that we are currently seeking role model students for our morning three-year-old integrated preschool classrooms for the 2024-2025 school year. Role model students must turn three between September 1st, 2023, and August 31st, 2024, in order to apply. And the child should demonstrate the qualities of a community peer role model. So for example, have age-appropriate language skills and ability to interact appropriately with peers, follow directions from a teacher, engage in classroom activities, be independent with toileting by the start of the school year, that, that kind of thing. Interested parents will need to complete and submit a registration packet and questionnaire by March 1st. And all students who apply will be scheduled an in-person screening. The day of the screening, we will be hosting small groups of children for approximately one-hour sessions. Half of the group will rotate through readiness, speech and language, occupational therapy, and physical therapy screenings, while the other half of the group engages in a group activity run by an integrated preschool teacher, speech and language pathologist, and occupational therapist. Each group, each group will meet for approximately 30 minutes and then switch. So we're really enthusiastic about this next step because we're very confident that it's going to help our, make our program even more beneficial by promoting increased progress for our special education preschool students. So any questions about our screening process?
Any questions? Steve?
I think it's a great idea. I think the challenge is going to be the time of day we want to complete this, right? So parents being available, what have you. I imagine this is going to be during the school day, the screening is going to take place, right?
Right, right.
I think that's where you're going to get the challenge of getting parents to do that. Never mind out of the, where they're existing to take a half-day to go ahead and do that. So the more marketing, advertising, whatever the word we want to use is going to be important if we want to do that.
Sure, sure. And we'll try to be flexible too with scheduling, you know, when we, where we have open slots. If it's easier for them to come in first thing in the morning or last thing in the afternoon, we'll try to be as schedule for working, you know, as flexible for working parents as we can.
And I think similarly to like IEP meetings or any other school-based meetings, parents are eager to get their children involved in a pre-K program. So I'm hoping that this would be a priority to our families so that they can get them at least on our radar and hopefully into our integrated pre-K. Mr. Ward, I saw your hand.
And this mirrors a lot of what our kindergarten sort of screening looks like. So again, it's getting the information out there, giving some time out there that here's the dates, here's the possible times, let's try to make it work and be flexible. That seems to work itself on out, but I think as you just said, it's marketing, making it available, making people aware of those dates and then being flexible in how we communicate discrimination.
Because I'm sure I don't need to remind the elementary school principals how many last-minute kindergarten registrations do we get in August? So, but yeah.
Any other questions for me?
Nope. Thank you so much.
No, thank you. Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
All right. Heading back up to 7B, we are now moving into the School Improvement Plan update portion of our meeting. We've got a request in the spirit of equity to flip the rotation a little bit here. So we can start with AES if that's okay.
So as, as Principal Penal is coming up, just a reminder to all of you, I made a change last year.
Right.
That we would go to three-year SIPs.
Mm-hmm.
I think when you hear today, it will now begin to make sense why we did it. I struggled as a principal with one-year plans because you don't get your data until you need to rewrite your plan. So let's, you know, it's, it's pretty consistent. I want to commend the principals for the work that they've done and working with Terry and myself. And I'm excited about the fact that we can start seeing beyond just immediate where we're going. All yours.
Okay. So I, I do just want to comment on the Window and Door Project first and how appreciative I am. And the word excited is an understatement because it literally looks like April, a new facility. So when that date is scheduled for the community to come in, hopefully you're all able there to see it because it's absolutely gorgeous. All right. So I'm going to dive right in. I'm just going to highlight kind of what we've been doing this year and our work moving forward for this year. I do have all the data embedded as well. So if you have any questions at the end, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you. So for District Goal One, I focused really on that professional responsibility, collaborative decision-making, and shared practice. And this year, I focused more on self-reflection. So I started the year meeting individually with all staff members. And we actually looked at the evaluation rubric where staff members had to go through each and every standard and rate themselves. They then met with me and talked about their ratings so that we could find areas of growth. So I feel like when we want to grow in an area, you really need to start with looking at yourself, whether it's a personal goal or an academic goal. And that was something I did a lot myself last year. So I was able to take that and work with staff towards that this year. So in doing that, another thing I, I looked at was the strengths of staff members. So for example, one of the staff members looked right at me and said, I am not presenting at staff meetings. It's not what I do. I'm fine with a proficient rating. Exemplary is not something I'm looking for. I just want to make a difference with kids. So I looked right at her and said, then that's what we're working on this year. So she has now presented at staff meetings. And just being able to work with her and really talk about the area of growth and be there for her to grow has been really powerful this year. So that's been kind of my focus for Goal One. Just another couple of things. So common planning time. This year, we made sure that we provided a schedule where special educators are included as well as all the other service providers that we have now added to both of the elementary schools. So that would be the reading specialists, including Ms. Maggie. And then we have our two part-time reading specialists and also a math specialist. So again, you think about these kids going out to get serviced and then there's no time for teachers to then talk about, oh, I worked with this small group doing this. That's what you should continue with in your classroom. And that goal came really from the special education data. The MCAS data for special education continues to need improvement. So working together with special educators and really making sure there's continuous improvement in terms of curriculum and continuity and consistency was something else that we really worked on. I'm just going to go to number two. So number two is multiple data sources. And you'll hear Mr. Ward and I be pretty consistent on this goal. We have the same exact assessments that we use. I will highlight this year that we've added the Early Bird Screener, which is a dyslexia screener that we provided in grade one in the fall. And then we just did with our kindergarten students. We then had data meetings following that assessment with our Orin Gillingham trained specialist. And we then progress monitor them, continuing to use our assessments that we use for progress monitoring. So it's definitely more of a pinpointed tier-three type intervention that we're able to then give those students. If you look at science, we're just continuing to review the updated standards. We collaborate and review the wonders. So our new reading program, now that we've had a year of it, we've been able to take those stories and topics and align them with our science curriculum so that there is consistency and it's kind of a cross-curriculum for reading and science. And then we even utilize science as a work in the classroom this year. So, you know, a class earned their tickets and they exploded Mentos and Coca-Cola outside. So we're just looking for any opportunity to create more curriculum opportunities in the classroom. For math, for new this year is the ST Math that you saw Sarah DiMadera present from Free Town Elementary. So the ST Math is in all classrooms. That's been something that's been really great this year. Students absolutely love it. We've also looked at all the staff math blocks and collaborated around the most effective setup and planned walkthroughs to look at what math blocks look like across the board because we've been so focused on ELI. We set non-negotiables for just an example, discourse. If I go into a math lesson and I don't hear the word strategy in a 45-minute period, that's a problem. You know, teachers tend to say, what idea do you have? Like just shifting that to what strategy, there's different strategies to use. So just looking at things like that. And then the last goal focuses around DEI and what we're doing at Assamumpset. So we do have an equity team in place this year that all schools actually have in place, where we did work on a vision and defined it. And then again, just looking at the school in terms of extracurricular activities. Are we being inclusive of everybody? Does everyone feel as if they belong? We did give student voice. We, we kind of expanded that this year. So Superintendent Strauss does do round tables with students. I had spoken to him because I wanted to start a kids cabinet. So it's one student from every single classroom that I meet with. And Mr. Strauss is going to be a part of that as well. And we focus on things like DEI with them. So we did recreate our mission because it just had our core values that didn't have anything about kindness or inclusive or acceptance. So that was one of the things, for example, that the kids cabinet did this year. So I have a lot of other stuff, but if anyone has any questions on.
No, we certainly appreciate the update. No, we certainly appreciate the update for sure, Ms. Penal. Any questions from the committee? Awesome. Thank you so much. Mr. Ward.
Six minutes, nine seconds.
I'm going to be, don't worry.
So do it in five.
So, good evening, everyone, and as always, thank you for this opportunity to speak. So I'm very tempted to just say ditto, any questions, because it is very similar as my Goal Number One and Goal Number Two. It's multiple data sources through reading and math. It is, and this is that word Mr. Strauss used last year, interconnected that continues on to this year. We're working through this. The piece I do want to add, and it goes to Goal Number Three, is our writing goal, right? So if we take, we speak about, when we take a look at our MCAS for Freetown Elementary School compared to the state, it's not quite where it needs to be. So what we've done is taken a look over the last few years at the writing prompts, how our students responded, and then Mrs. Fleming with the ELA curriculum leaders, she navigated through professional development of looking at, here's literally printed out a third-grade student's work samples from MCAS. Here's where Desi wants them to be. Here's the expectation. Here's the exemplars. Here's our students and what is happening. So we started to have those conversations, not only district-wide, but now we are really just filtering into the classrooms or teams at the school. And I'm proud to say just this week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we have a Looking at Student Work protocol. Literally, we are prompts students are given, teachers are coming with a above, an at, maybe a below-grade-level student writing sample, and we're having conversations. We don't put the students' names on it. Here's the rubric for that grade level, and then we share it. And the question I continue to ask, and my teachers are now getting very familiar with, all right, what's next steps? What's happening to, what's the small group going to look like? And a part of our common planning, which was nice this year as a master scheduling team came together, in the past, we always would just do grade-level common planning. So my kindergarten team, my first-grade team, second grade, and third-grade teams, that does still happen, but on Wednesdays, if you ever want to come in and join us, you're welcome, kindergarten, first grade come together. So it's, we flex the schedule, so it works like that, and then second and third grade come. So think of that, all of those educators around one table, looking at samples of student work and coming up in a collaborative effort and spiriting, what's next step for our students? So it's with the students in mind, so that's the work that we're looking for writing to just add to that piece, not only math and ELA with Early Bird, ST Math, the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year diagnostics that we're giving, but also reading, excuse me, writing has become an extreme focus for us at the elementary level. And as Freetown is just speaking of that, and we look at our writing at MCAS, it's not where we want it to be, and it's a work in progress there. And our last goal, again, is around that DEIB, that if we, creating that environment in our school where children feel they belong, they're welcome, we're focused in on their health, their safety, social-emotional needs. So that's the relationship building. You heard Masilla Stage say, "Usab." We don't, "Usab," we don't use that. We call it a common corner, but nevertheless, same type of place for students if they need a break. We have a sensory walk in our building that's on the floor, in the hallway, in the pre-K kindergarten wing. Yes, it's in pre-K kindergarten on purpose, those students can be there, but it's open to our first, second, and third grade. Anyone who knows how the layout of the building, first, second, and third are on the other side, but guess what? That walk to get to the sensory walk helps them out, right? So these are the type of where students feel like if they need a break, or if something's become too much for them. We have conversations, relationship building, whether it's positive action, whether it's wonders as a social-emotional piece to the wonders program that we're there. It's morning meetings, it's closing circles, it's greeting kids as they come in, it's the hug at the end of the day. And then the second part of that final goal is just making sure that we celebrate our differences. We accept them in the students, so our conversations are happening, whether it's about holidays or just sort of talking about mirrors indoors, that our books that we are reading, that it just, it celebrates not only students of race and color, but also military families and making sure we have those conversations. So that's the quick update for Freetown Elementary School. It's just a place that I think is, I firmly believe is just thriving where kids can just be themselves. And we often say this all the time, that we embrace mistakes. There's a good reason why a pencil has an eraser at the end because, guess what, kids, it's okay. Mr. Ward makes mistakes all day long, and it's okay. And we learn from it, and we grow together. So, any questions?
Me, for the elementary level, I'm happy we're getting back to writing piece, and I think that's been a, in the past, for the years. But the other side of the coin is, we have a district that has Chromebooks for everybody.
Sure.
And, you know, I know in the last couple of years, we talked about what is the education for students to know how to use that Chromebook as they get up in the later years, right? As they get to grade, they get to middle school, there's more of a onus to use them, what have you. So is that anywhere in the curriculum as far as, especially starting young? I know they know how to...
Let me field that.
Okay.
So this year, if you recall, we're doing our Science, Technology, Engineering, and our Digital Literacy Review. So we've already identified that that is a large gap in our K-12 vertical alignment. We are addressing it. It's going to be in a more full force next year, but there are teachers that are dabbling in typing, typing programs to get kids functioning correctly. We will also embed all of the proponents of the digital literacy standard within the grade levels. And there's a lot that will happen during K-3 classrooms, including how to turn off, how to log in, how to log out appropriately so that you're secure, cybersecurity, common sense media. So we are working on it. You'll see it in a more beautiful form for next year. It is work that will happen from now through the summer, but I'll have some sketches for you at some of our spring meetings because we're meeting as a team on those.
How many minutes?
But I took like 30 seconds.
That's true. No worries. Thank you, Mr. Ward, I appreciate you.
Well, you can ask for a question if you want at that level.
Yeah, we can. We can definitely stack the deck.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Dr. Sullivan.
So there were a lot of little segues there for me. As usual, Mr. Ward stole some of my thunder, bringing Masilla Stage's work into it, but I'll start with my, and then I want to get back to the writing too because that was one of the main pieces I wanted to talk about tonight. So my, my three goals basically are an SEL goal, a belonging goal, and an attendance goal, all with the end game, which is why I loved the idea of the three-year plan that Mr. Strauss brought to us, the end game of academic growth. So all the data is there in front of you, ample data on things. MCAS data, like Mike said, we have a lot of work to do. There's just no denying it. I'm also of the thought that it is the one data point. The other data point that you have there is iReady, but it correlates so closely with MCAS. We're still looking at that one thing. The celebration, a win, we had conferences last night, we have conferences tomorrow during the day and at night. Report cards reflect more than one data point, and we have lots of very satisfied parents, very happy parents, very hard-working children, hard-working teachers. So look, there's, there is more data than just what's in there, but I did want to point to that. As far as the writing, I wanted to go back to that because as I thought about the presentation tonight, one of the things that Mr. Strauss had said to us in preparation for this was think of some wins. And one of the things that was the biggest win for me was over the summer, one of the days, a portion of the day that the administrative team got together, we sat, and at one point it was, I know Mike, Bethany, and I were in a, in a corner of the room here with Mr. Strauss, and we were looking at writing, we were looking at our scores, the preliminary MCAS scores. And it quickly became apparent that K-12 writing was an issue in the district. And I can vividly remember Kalen, the high school principal, kind of saying, drafting a writing goal that Terry was writing on the Promethean Board, and it was a high school-level writing goal of how to improve that. And Mike and I were both ferociously on the side of each other, trying to adapt it without even talking, trying to adapt it to the elementary level, and that is work that we were able to do. Kalen shared her goal with me. So before we even got to data team meetings on, before we even, before we even administered iReady in the fall, we already knew that writing was going to be an issue. We knew it from the MCAS, and the iReady correlates so closely with it. So we were already thinking about, the administrators thinking about that writing goal, I certainly was, and was able to carry that along. And then with Terry with us at data team meetings, realizing that that was something we absolutely had to work on. So, that being said, one of the, for me, one of the wins was that work together and knowing that we're all looking at the same thing and not denying, putting it right out there that the MCAS was not where I wanted it to be at all. Not the group I was receiving, not the group I was keeping, and not the group that I sent over to the middle school. We have a lot of work to do there. Writing was a big one. ELA, another thing that's been, that we've worked on is because of that writing issue, we've identified idea development and conventions, and I was excited to hear even Delaney mention that in the, the little girl that just presented for the, with the ESL teachers, ESL teachers, conventions sorely lacking in so many of the samples that we saw. So the ELA department has focused on that in both grades. Writing development, really implicit and explicitly teaching grammar, backing up to what was already taught, teaching conventions, modeling the use of good conventions. I joke with the teachers all the time, you can only be so excited, one exclamation point is enough. So we have to teach proper punctuation, you know, there's no such thing as three of them. You can't get any more excited than one. We have to model the use of the proper punctuation. So they're doing that. The piece that's really exciting about that as well is them having that common goal, and math has a common goal too. It's numbers and operation are weak in fourth grade, and fifth grade is geometry and measurement. So their goals are working in that way. But another thing that's really exciting is that they've connected, everything is just very connected, I feel, this year. The PD is connected to what they're doing. Three-quarters of my building for their PD option shows the stations where they're learning how to have the kids working in groups and producing products and, and working, really, really breaking them up so they're working together on whatever the common goal, learning goal is. So the whole math department, grade four and five, are in the stations PD, and they're using that to, for that, so that's their professional development goal, and their student learning goal is, is if they're in the math department, it's on measure, measurement and geometry, and they're using those, they're integrating those stations. So they're really connecting the PD to what they're actually doing. Fifth-grade ELA is doing the same one. Fourth-grade ELA is doing a PD that I'm facilitating on SEL. Everything is really connected. What Taylor presented, the way he talked about what physical education looks like and looking at whole child, all of those things are connected. So my first goal, a win for me is absolutely, and I will, I will thank Mr. Strauss and all of you until, I haven't thanked you enough for that second School Adjustment Council. The data is all there in front of you. You can see where we are in November, and that's, looks like we'll be trending in the same direction for the children that need intervention from the School Adjustment Counselor. We're very fortunate that the individual that we hired, Tyler Maderis, was over at FES filling in for maternity leave when this group of youngsters were first graders. So she has established relationships with so many family and so many children, it's been seamless. So that is wonderful. She's also been a very valuable asset too. I'll jump to my belonging goal on our equity team. When Mr. Strauss and I had our interview with her, she talked about having served on one of her previous districts and sort of brought a lot of her ideas with us, with her on that. I also think that one of the wins, and there's also some data chops and all that colorful fun stuff for you in there, on how well the staff has adopted, just not necessarily an exact program, and Terry and I have talked about this, a program in a box is not what we think we need, but knowing that there needs to be some strategies that children can use, like the area that Taylor talked about. Class, whether, whether they're doing a morning meeting, you can see how many teachers in the material I gave you are doing either a morning meeting, that they're using zones of regulation, they're using the work that we did from the mock bracket book that we read as a staff. Ninety-nine percent of the staff participated on their own time with that, so using the ruler approach. So those are the wins on Goal One. On Goal Two, we have our equity team. I'm very proud of the representation of our equity team. We have a school nurse, we have a special educator, we have our adjustment counselors, myself, and an academic teacher. So it's a well-rounded group. One of the teachers is new to the district and was really enthusiastic to get involved in it. She's come, came from a much bigger district and has some experience in that, so she's brought a lot to the table for that. So we're excited about that. On page 12, I have all the efforts on the teachers' pots as far as working towards the belonging and the social-emotional piece. We work every, every Sunday, I share a article on something, asking the teacher to model, teachers to read and model positive character attributes. We've covered sincerity, confidence, patience, sociability, compassion, curiosity, happiness, flexible thinking, kindness, gratitude, being a lifelong learner, active listening, and I won't tell you what this Sundays is because I'm not going to give it away. And then our third one is attendance, and we are making progress on it. You can see that we are meeting that 94%, I had a lofty goal of it being 95% attendance weekly. I don't have as many chronics as I had last year, but the ones, I will admit, the ones that I have are pretty heavy, but I'm working very closely on them. I've had multiple parent meetings that have been successful. I've had letters home, lots of phone calls saying, "Can you, how about if you come in now?" You know, tardy is better than not at all, but I am working on a few, about six right now. I got it down to six. Pretty heavy chronic absenteeism. The attendance, you know, kind of wanes around, you know, November was tough, around Thanksgiving, there's vacations and those things that I just don't have control over, but that's a win. Any questions to me? You have lots of stuff in front of you.
I do actually have a question. So, in regards to the promoting a sense of belonging and all of that, obviously it's fantastic, but my question is, is there any part of that education that discusses why you're educating them on this? For example, do you discuss, not necessarily in depth, but that maybe you do these practices because of things like racism or discrimination? Because when I was in school, I learned this, but there obviously wasn't as big of an emphasis on it. And then as kids grow and the outside world seeps in, it just kind of goes out the window. So I guess my question is, all of this diversity equity and all of that is great, but if you don't teach them why it's happening, I don't want to say it's for nothing, but my question would be, how do you prepare them for people that don't think the same way and are adults who could change their minds?
Yeah. It's a wonderful question, and I would say that I can't say that, that I can, I can't say that I honestly say that we do implicitly say that. I think that right now, what I have the benefit of, and me being able to compare myself, I have no idea what's happened at the middle school in the last eight years because I haven't been there, but I'm still, I still have the benefit of nine- and 10-year-olds that are very accepting and are very open-minded and are loving. And, I mean, you saw when they were presenting, I saw at least two different children hugging one another. And so I do have that benefit, that I just haven't had the adversity piece of it. I had more of it, again, I don't know what happens at the middle school as far as those kinds of things. When I was there eight years ago, there were more things. We had, you know, an opinion about someone's style of dress or any, any number of different things. Any way to point out what's different about somebody else and find fault with that was more the older kids. And I think one of the things we've talked about, and I know we've talked about it at the DEI meetings and in our, in our equity meetings is, let's get them young. Nurse Burke was one of the first ones that said that. If we can teach children when they're young to be accepting and to encourage the belonging and all, you know, all of the things we want them to do, then, then they will get somewhere. That's where we have to start. And I think for now, for me, I've had the benefit of, that's really where they are, so we haven't had to, but absolutely, your point is valid and we need to do that.
Have guidance counselors noticed any reduce in bullying or any of that?
And again, I think it would, that would, it would be probably more of a, I don't have a big number of it.
But again, it's not just...
They are, they're so, they are, really are so accepting of one another, and I have to say that it's probably age, but I would say that probably K-3 is as well, we don't see as much of it.
Right.
So I think, and it's a, it's a really important question because we need, when I first came here and interviewed, we talked about the scaffolding approach, and one size doesn't fit all. You don't, you don't obviously give the same kind of why information to primary school students that you do to middle school students. So because the equity teams are so new, we are really looking to establish a foundation. As we move forward, that's when we start talking about how do you effectively bring in age-appropriate conversations? So we've started them with superintendent roundtable, we've started them with, you know, your kids' cabinet, we've started it, and it will continue. This is a, that why though, is the premise of everything we do. It's, I don't want to start talking about... of everything we do. It's, I don't want to start talking about why at grades until we have the middle school set and the high school set, so that everything becomes seamless. So, the language is seamless and consistent. But that is the premise, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Sullivan at this time?
Thank you.
Last but certainly not least, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, thank you. So, I have a bet with Mr. Ward that I'll be able to give my whole speech in one breath. You ready? Just kidding, I'm not going to be able to do that for you. But, I'll get it done quickly. I do want to mention a couple of things before I do. One, to your question Brenna, regarding the, and it's something relative to the middle school in this perspective. We had a speaker come in to speak to our seventh and eighth graders. We could only have, due to basically space requirements, we could only go with two grades. We decided seventh and eighth grade. We're going to have another speaker come into our sixth grader, sixth graders later. And that, that conversation and the premise of the presentation was around how language that we hear can so greatly affect our lives. So, the speaker talked about this experience that she had as a young person with a police officer that made her feel very bad about herself and really kind of sent her in a downward spiral. And then later in her life, she had an interaction with a teacher, kind of buoyed her back up. And really the focus was how the words we use, and she even references the, you know, the rhyme, well, it's not a rhyme, but sticks and stones may break my bones, right? And referencing, she says, in fact, the words are the things that hurt us. So, to your point, yes, we're talking about the reasons why we're talking about these things at the middle school level, and I believe continuing on to the high school level, as that speaker also spoke to the high school as well. So, thank you very much for having me be able to give, speak to you about our school improvement plan at the middle school. We have four goals. As it turns out, we were in the process of working through multi-year goals previously, prior to this three-year goal. The first two goals that you see there are actually already in year three. We had started them in year one, the year prior to Mr. Strauss joining us. In the first one, we were, that first year was a data gathering year relative to active learning, how much active learning or inquiry-based learning was taking place in our classrooms. We gathered that data, identified a need to expand the amount that we were doing. So, last year, we were looking, as you remember, we started with some modeling. I presented some lessons to the teachers, actually taught lessons to the teachers, and then used that as a jumping off point, so that curriculum leaders then could then model for the teachers through the year, and actually in departments, in departmental time, teach a lesson on their subject area that had an inquiry base or an active learning element. This year, the teachers are doing it, and they're doing, they're presenting their lessons or teaching their lessons to groups that they're a little out of their comfort zone. So, we're putting, for example, math and ELA are two departments together. So, if you're with your math, fellow math teachers, these are people you know very well. You're much more comfortable teaching that lesson to that group of teachers than you might be to a group of English teachers. You're an eighth grade math teacher, you may not have a very strong relationship or a close relationship with a sixth grade English teacher. And so, therefore, but yet we see it despite the fact that you're talking about widely disparate subject areas, that, those things do actually cross over in terms of pedagogy. So, you can see an English teacher who would see something a math teacher does and say, I really like that. I think I can convert that to something that I do. So, we're doing that throughout this year, through departmental time. They're giving, each teacher or pairs of teachers in some cases are teaching lessons and taking their lessons, converting them to more active-based, and we are maximizing the intellectual, the use of the intellectual capital that already exists in our building. That's lesson, that's active, I'm sorry, goal one, which will be completed at the end of this year. And my successor will have the opportunity to create a new goal as they, as they decide. Year two, second goal also in year three of the process, the, two years ago, we started with the, as a faculty, determining what are the learning expectations, what are those soft skills that we want to see our students be able to do. You have a handout there that defines those, those skills. We took, we put together a rubric for that, and then last year, the teachers were using, utilizing that rubric and assessing, assessing their students, and we gathered the data through report card comments. So, the rubric's loaded in there, they can enter those comments in, and then we can gather that data. That's where those, those data charts come from. At the end of this year, we will have completed it. It will be a continued process. It's institutionalized. Teachers will continue to be assessing students on learning expectations in future years, but the gathering of that data won't be a goal. It will just be a process that we now currently do. And then on to goal three, this is our belonging goal. Last year was a data gathering goal. We were looking at, how do our students, I believe I spoke to you about this last year, how do our students break down in terms of subgroups relative to things like attendance and discipline and grades, and, and then how do those, how do they represent in terms of percentages relative? So, for example, we found that all of our subgroups had similar attendance rates relative to their percentage of the school. So, those are good signs. It demonstrates that we don't have subgroups that are not attending school because they might not feel like they belong to, to the school alike. This year, we have the equity team. The equity team has done an excellent job of beginning the process of putting together what we're calling a school culture curriculum. And we started something similar to this a couple of years with the advisory, extended advisory lessons. The student, sorry, the guidance team put them together a couple of years ago. We did this in response to COVID as a way to return to COVID and sort of bring these students back who are going to be here every day and have a feeling of belonging. And now, we're going to expand that out, and we're putting together a curriculum right now with this excellent group of equity teachers, equity team teachers, and staff members, because it's not all teachers, just teachers. In addition to that, we also had a kindness week this week, I mean, this year, in which case our student government and our pre-lake leaders put together a spirit week that wasn't sort of like dress-up spirit week. It was change the way we behave week. So, they had challenges each day that a student would be able to get checked off. If they, for example, sat with or welcomed another student at their lunch table that they don't normally sit with, they could get assigned off on that. If they met all the challenges, they got a button that said, you know, great job. I forget exactly what the button said, but it was, it was a nice little reward for them. And then finally, for the reading and writing, M-CAS, the major change that we have relative to that is the introduction, or the implementation, I should say, of the Amplify ELA. And I will say to you that I, at this point, I'm really crossing my fingers that what I'm seeing is going to turn into the results that I'm hoping it will, because I go in, and I recommend you come by and look. Walk into our ELA classrooms and these kids are writing, and they are writing, and they're writing, and they're grumbling about it. But that's okay because writers write. And, and it is my belief that that significant increase in the amount of writing that's taking place, it will in fact improve both the quality and the efficiency of people, of their, of their writing. All of us, I'm assuming, are human beings, therefore, don't like to write, okay? Even writers don't like to write. But, we are better at it when we do it a lot. There's no doubt that it improves our efficiency.
And they're typing.
And then finally, I expect.
They're typing also.
Well, yes, they are typing. But I, but I wanted to just comment that I was in anticipation of Steve's question earlier. Unfortunately, I thought I was going to go first, and I was going to answer his question before he asked it. We next year are going to have, we are making an adjustment to the curriculum for the sixth grade ELA two. We have, and which will be presented to you later in the year. And in that curriculum, we are focusing on the literacy elements of things that will, the skills as well. So, not just keyboarding, but presentations, use of Google Suite, all of those skills that are necessary. And we are going to be, our working title right now is literacy in the digital age. LVA. There you go. Any questions? Steve?
Comments? I would just say, obviously, I know what school improvement plans are. So, you can see the pride that you, in the work that goes into it. Great goals, great action steps. I think I'm in the green zone on the zones of regulation. You can see the pride, but I think more than ever, over the last, you've seen a bit of a change in terms of the district all walking together. So, you see the foundation in the, in the early grades, whether it's the academics, the writing, and the way that spirals up, to what you just spoke about, Mr. Higgins, which I think is great, but also the sense of community and belonging and the proactive approach, not reactive approach, which speaks a little bit to Brenna, what you were saying earlier. So, it's, it's a great, it's always proud to hear these, that you have pride in your schools. I think it's a great thing, great work. And I love the three-year. I think it makes sense because you can see progress. So, I think that's all from me. Great job.
The only missing link for me is connecting the dots, right? LMID students have it for four years, and then they go for two years with you, and then three, right? So, how are we, and the data that we have, our three-year program, the data is for a class that's no longer in your school, right? So, I get the whole foundation piece, but how are we making sure that the students that were transitioning from the primary grades up to the intermediate school, and then we're getting ready to do, right? So, you talk about the attendance, I think that's awesome. My first question is, what does sixth grade look like this year, right? Is it better because that great class went to a different school? You know, so how do we connect the dots?
So, I think eventually, and I don't want to get into a long, a little, but eventually we will get to a point where we are basically creating portfolios for kids, where they are following so that the data points are moving with them, data points. That's all they are, that are moving with them so that teachers can then see. And in some ways, Cherry is doing a really good job with that now. We had to get to a foundation, as you said, Steve, where people are talking the same language across the district.
Right.
And I think quickly, the principals, you all have done a fantastic job with that.
And obviously, we've talked about writing, but I think you'll also see a boost. I mean, there's all this talk about question type. And I think that, that'll translate in math too, whether it's constructive responses or the types of questions. So, that writing, not only a life skill and a skill that they'll use throughout all the grades, but it certainly will show a boost in the M-CAS scores, so.
Because with that, there is a monumental shift in the, I'd say, the real world, public sector, what have you. They're getting rid of PowerPoint. They're getting rid of Google Slides. It's all, you need to come with a written document, right, that has the agenda, action items, what have you. So, this is just going to play very well as these kids move into, at some point in the future, because that's where a lot of organizations are going. They don't want the slides. They don't want to do it. They want to be able to read it beforehand, look at it, take action to it, what have you.
Community.
Real quick with Bob.
Yeah. I mean, at that grade level, almost every kid has a cell phone, even though they're not allowed to use them in school, I know. But outside, you see them everywhere, and they're always on their cell phone, and they're always texting, and they don't use correct grammar, and they don't use correct spelling. How impactful do you think that is when it comes to translating into, into learning the proper, proper information in the classroom?
It's extremely impactful. However, one of the barriers or obstacles, maybe obstacles is a better word for it, to, to increasing the amount of writing that students, correct writing that students are doing in the classroom, is the amount of grading that goes along with it, right? For every assignment that I give my students to write, I have to read it and grade it, from the littlest to the biggest. The new program that we have in the middle school, as you remember when the teachers came and spoke to you, the little stuff is being taken care of by the program. So, it's assessing the, the writing that they're doing on a, and being able to give the feedback to the student and to the teacher so they can see the progress. They're still grading the bigger assignments, but it, I, it's inevitable if you're a teacher, you steer away from too many writing assignments because you have a family. You never get to see them if all you're doing is grading their favors. So, we've been very happy with that. We got a lot of writing going on, and I don't get the sense that the teachers are seeing a significantly increased load of grading going on as a result.
Good. Great. Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Moving right along here and being cognizant of time.
Principals, you don't have to stay.
Yep. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight will be public participation. I do not believe that there's anyone here tonight for public participation. So, we will move right on to old business. There is an FY24 budget update in our packets. I do not think we necessarily have to run through that now, but any questions for our leadership team regarding the FY24 budget update?
No, and if you do have questions, I would ask that you send them to Renee. She can put them together and then give them in one time to do.
Yep, yep.
Before we move on from old business, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to revisit the policy. That's the reason I'm here on this board. I, that's not technically new business, so it falls under old business. So, I don't know how you'd like to open that up, but I think we need to revisit that policy.
What policy is that?
The policy regarding students who are transgender and the openness and communication between the school and their parents.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can certainly discuss that when we get down to subcommittee updates, for sure.
Or other business.
Or other business.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was old business, not other.
Yep, no worries. It hides from you on the back.
Got it.
Yeah, no worries. Moving down to new business, we handled agenda item 10A with our English Language Learner Curriculum presentation. Thank you so much for that, Ms. Fleming. B is going to be, we do need a vote required for the REEDS collaborative new membership. I have the vote here.
So, they are asking to add two more districts?
Yep.
Brockton and Whitman Hansen. It just takes a requirement of vote?
Yep.
Of the school committee.
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion at this point. It's Brockton and Whitman Hansen, as Mr. Strauss has said. I believe this is worded in the form of a vote.
What is REEDS?
REEDS is a collaborative out of Middleborough. So, they provide services to districts for evaluations, for contracted services, speech, OT, PT, reading services. They also have programs that we can access through special education. I don't know what this will do to impact REEDS.
That's what I'm, what I'm thinking.
And I know that right now, they are already inundated with evaluations. And as a district that uses them for evaluations, I'm concerned because Brockton is obviously a huge district.
Correct.
And the impact that students who would be accessing their academies for out-of-district placements, how that would impact our students that are placed there. Whitman Hansen is also a large district. So, I didn't, I wasn't aware this was coming through, otherwise I would have processed it a little earlier. But I do have a couple of concerns about them adding on to new districts and what things look like currently for them.
It looks like we don't have to do it until February.
We can table it. It doesn't look like we have to vote it until February 1st.
Yeah.
So, if you would send me some questions, I mean, I sat in on the conversations. Notice I did not say I agreed with the conversations. I just sat in on the conversations as, as the board member. If you have specific questions, send them to Renee. I will then, you know, be able to answer them or get any information from REEDS. Those questions that you just had, Ashley, were questions myself and two other superintendents of small districts like ourselves asked, because we were very concerned about getting pushed out.
And we have our special ed administrators meeting coming up in a week or two through REEDS, which is quarterly, that all of the special ed administrators from the districts that support the, the program are part of. So, I'm sure that something will come up at that meeting too. So, I would like to hear from other districts as to what they're thinking in regards to adding in to other districts too.
Yeah, if the committee is amenable to it, I'd like to probably table this to the January meeting and give you folks some, a chance to just research kind of the impact of this on our district. I think, I think we kind of need to see what that, what that's going to look like, and obviously, the impact of us. So, do I need a motion to table?
Yes.
So may.
Thank you, Brenna. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor of just tabling this REEDS collaborative vote until our next meeting in January, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose the tabling? Anyone abstaining? Pass is 7-0. Thank you so much for that. I think that'll give us a little bit of time to do our due diligence.
Yeah. I, I think that from a process perspective, what if we don't vote? Right? What impact, does that change the two-thirds? Does it just reduces the number that have to meet the two-thirds? So, I'd like to get that detailed, because for me, I'm a no right now because of the concerns, you know, you have Brockton and Whitman Hansen are coming in. A lot of funding comes from the state, goes to those schools, right, just based upon the size. If you look at the two budgets, you also look at their two special education budgets, they're huge. So, I have a really strong concern about the impact of this district, and I would have to hear what they're going to do to mitigate that, to make to hear what they're going to do to mitigate that, to make sure that we're still getting that same level of service, if not more.
Yep, I agree. I agree. Okay, awesome, okay, so that has been tabled. Moving down to agenda item number 11, directive reports, Ms. Fleming?
I pretty much did everything, so there's information on here, including some breakdown for title for you, Steve, on the back. And then I will be excited to share some curriculum leader material in the future and what we're doing because it's very invigorating to have that time with staff looking at student work. But for tonight, unless you have no questions, I am good.
Yeah, it was exciting to hear Ms. Ward talking about the student work protocols and those meetings, so that's great stuff. Thank you so much. Moving on, Ms. Boulay?
So in anticipation of tonight being a lengthy meeting, I tried to make my report extra detailed for everyone, capturing numbers, some additional comments, and also just looking ahead towards budget season coming up right around after the holiday. So I'm not going to review everything in depth, I'm just going to open it up for questions as well. Is there anything that anybody wants to discuss or wants me to elaborate on?
Oh, no, I was just thinking. No, but thank you for attending, I know you weren't at our last meeting, I just want to thank you for being in attendance at the jamboree and I'm sure our kids kind of showed up and showed out, so.
I tried to play the, I made a slideshow, I'll share it with all of you just so you can look at it. I know you probably didn't get to appreciate it as much playing before all the other presentations went up tonight, but the whole, the whole fall events, like all of the events that surrounded unified sports and basketball were just amazing this year. And that's a round of applause to our administration for supporting it, Mr. Strauss for always supporting it, Ms. Briggs for leading, you know, the groups throughout every season. It's just been remarkable.
Awesome. Any questions for Ms. Boulay, if not, or email is certainly open?
Ashley, can you, I think it would be important for the community, since we are on television, just to quickly talk about the number of evals we have coming up?
Sure, and I know that I didn't touch upon your question that you had last month, Steve, which I did elaborate in my report, but may want to speak publicly towards, since you did ask it publicly last week. So evaluations are through the roof right now, which is very concerning. We, we re, this is actually going to tag team both evaluations and Steve's question last month. So we realigned our structure for this school year, bringing on an additional administrator so that I was able to focus on my director of student services duties while also allowing the elementary schools to have the attention and support that they require. So you can see, if you look at page two, right now FES is low compared to where we were last year. However, I did put a little disclaimer there because you can see that as of November, the end of November last year, we had 83 students at Freetown Elementary. However, in my June report, we went up to 104 students. So the number at FES right now isn't, it's not shocking me that it's low because this is sort of that fall low, right? The evaluations are coming in, the early intervention evaluation referrals are coming in, we have a lot of move-ins that come in after the holiday break. So I do anticipate that that numbered 70 is going to jump to close to 104 next year. So, you know, even though we realigned the duties of the special ed administrators, we have our secondary administrator, Danielle Johansson, who's assigned grade six through postgraduate, who is really focused on the middle school solely at this point because of the number of students, which you can see on page three of my report. We have 136 special ed students at FLMS, which is the highest number in the district, coming in at 19.3% special education population, which is very high. We have a very high seventh grade, which I talked about and put in my report the last two meetings, which is concerning for liaison numbers. But not only is the numbers at the middle school for special ed concerning, the evaluation numbers are concerning. And we also realigned our psychologists so that we were able to meet evaluation needs district-wide. And in looking at that, we had our secondary psychologist scheduled to do evaluations middle and high, whereas right now we only have her evaluating at the middle school because our evaluations are so high between initial referrals and reevaluations, which means that right now we're paying contracted service money to bring in outside resources to help us evaluate our high school students because we do not have the resources right now in district to support that, because everyone is stretched so thin with evaluations. And one of those, you know, concerns that lead into my thought process with adding the two districts to REEDS is that we use REEDS for our evaluations. And right now we rely on them pretty heavily for our overflow because we have a contract with them for a certain amount of evaluations that are conducted every year. So losing that or being pushed back is going to then push us into being noncompliant. And as of just two days ago, I had a conversation with REEDS about a meeting that I'm supposed to have according to the state guidelines by January 16th, and now it's pushed to February 1st because they're inundated with evaluations. So we're using them, we're contracting with them, they're helping us, but at the same time it's making us out of compliance in terms of our timelines for the state. So I'm very concerned, I put that on the last page of my report. I really do feel like if you look at the numbers at Upon-Equip in FLMS, numbers are concerning and require a much higher need and level of attention for special education and student needs as a whole. And right now I'm being pulled again out of my role to help support the overflow because Danielle is focused solely on the middle school, so I feel like we're kind of in the same place we were last year. And even though numbers are high at FES, Meredith is still very much focused on developing the pre-K kindergarten transition, which is what our goal was for her to be assigned to just FES, so that she wasn't just jumping around, making sure that everything was getting done and boxes were getting checked, but that she could focus on the development of our pre-K program, working with early intervention and making sure that our services and programming is adequate and appropriate. So I did do a comparison on that last page of what things look like, and you can see that this, that the caseload numbers on that final page, again, are only including active IEP students. It's not, it's not including students that are in the referral process or students that are being just consulted on or 504 meetings that we might get pulled into even though that's not special education. There's just a slew of responsibilities that come with being an administrator for special ed outside of just sitting in a meeting.
Yeah. Ms. Boulay, thank you for that. As a group, our numbers were obviously called out, right, in our last budget, our budget session, it seems like those numbers are going to be coming to fruition, so it's a testament to you and your ability to monitor and kind of prognosticate that. So I just want to publicly say, I mean, we're going to be kind of banging this drum again going into budget season. And again, we need to bring the numbers to the table and you've done a great job kind of reporting that. And we'll, I'll certainly remind both towns of where we were last year when we were having these conversations and moving forward into the budgets, I appreciate you.
Yeah, and I just want to say, like, if we look at our numbers at a glance, grades K to 12, there is a relief coming after the next two years, right? So this third grade bubble is our last huge grade level. So it's very hard to predict or maintain consistent programming and staffing when our numbers fluctuate so much.
Right.
Right, so after this big hurdle of third graders, you can see if you look at AES on page two, our third graders just at AES are 30 special education teachers, which is a huge impact right now at AES. We're really struggling. However, after that year passes, we're looking at cutting that number in half. So again, I mean, we're going to have to look at supporting this bubble moving up, but hopefully maintain lower numbers at least for the next few years until we have a better idea as to what's coming up.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Boulay? Awesome, Bob?
What's the state average for?
It's about 17%. So overall as a district, we're in a good place. I didn't put that, I added that later on, page three. So right now our building total is 463 out of roughly 2,694, which gives us about 17.2%. So that is comparable to the state average. However, you can see there are some buildings that are much greater than that.
And I also want to reiterate that state average worries me. And this is not a negative to any district. There are some districts that are proportionally very high.
Right.
So this is not a place, state average, if we're right at state average, that's a concern. Because if you take out pockets of schools throughout the Commonwealth, you eliminate them, then our average is higher than the state average.
Right.
We got, so I really want to make sure that we compare apples to apples when we talk state average, and I'm going to do that for you. We can, we can get that information and see the difference.
I wonder if that DART tool still exists?
Yeah, DART does exist.
So you could find a comp where it might be worked?
Steve, good.
Move-in? The one we're expecting, the move-in?
That is absolutely here. So they already live in district, but because of the move-in law, their previous district is assuming their bill until fiscal year '24. So we will be assuming that residential $350,000 spike next year.
Again, not a question, right? I'm not questioning you.
And it's not a question, that's why I put it in there. It is confirmed they are living here, but we are not on the hook for this year, but next.
And when we get to budget season, what offsets do we have to that, or will we do a review on it?
Yeah, we've got some things that are moving, so it'll be okay.
Great, okay.
I'm sorry, one more question?
Yeah, sure.
If we're relying on REEDS for our overflow and it looks like they're not, our needs are not quite being met, we're worrying about noncompliance, do we have options?
Well, we do have some options, but we tend to send our students that have some more significant need to REEDS because they have clinical psychologists that can give more in-depth diagnoses, which school psychologists are not required to do, right? Because they're school-based educational specialists. So we do have a couple of contracted providers, like right now we're using a psychologist through South Coast, we are tapping into our elementary psychologists even though we don't want to do that because their plates are full, but we're trying to use our internal resources because, again, funding from our contracted service line is running low, right? But we have this need, we have to get our evaluations done in order to remain in compliance with the regulations. So we do have things that we're tapping into as other resources. However, we're trying to use what we've contracted with for the year because it's already been paid for.
I understand that. Thank you.
Great presentation, thank you. Moving on down here, any questions? So Ms. Deirdre, Ms. Wellesley's in here tonight, but she did kind of include a packet for us to review. I would request and probably suggest just sending her any questions based off her packet that we might have. There's also, Alan, a FY25 budget timeline and process in there?
I just briefly talked, she and I had created, Whitman, Terry and Ashley had created a timeline for all of you to see as to how the process will work.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right, subcommittee updates, regional finance, anything at this time?
We will be having a meeting shortly. We had outreach from the town of Lakeville to say they've started their budget discussions.
Okay.
They have some questions that we're going to be putting together for the regional pincom just to update them. We have all the different members, it's the same group as last year. So that will be a remote meeting to start and then we'll coordinate some sessions we get along in the budget here. I will say, this is, I don't know if everyone's aware, but Ari Sky, the town administrator, is leaving. He'll be leaving in January, so something that, you know, we just need to make sure we get the right folks. I know the town accountant over there has been very supportive and been working with us, so definitely from a budget perspective, making sure that we're in lockstep and obviously with the chair over there in Lakeville.
Obviously wish Ari the best too. Thank you for that. Superintendent's Evaluation Committee, no updates at this time. The Wellness and Health Committee, any updates there?
I, we just met, I talked a couple of things in my report.
Yep.
About what I thought were the most important points, so.
Sure, absolutely. Brenna, anything to add to that?
I wasn't there.
Oh, okay, got you, sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot there.
No, that's fine, I appreciate it.
Policy Subcommittee, any updates there at this point for us?
An update, but I think Brenna had a question.
Yeah, I would like to reopen that and I'd like to discuss it more because it's not that there's a problem with it exactly, but there are distinct differences between being transgender and being transsexual. And this policy in particular, especially when you're teaching diversity, equity and inclusion, the difference in those terms matters. And you can't teach diversity, equity and inclusion, but then lump everybody together that is under an umbrella when they're significantly different things. The individuals and the students and the people, the adults, who are the ones that you're looking at in sports leagues and accessing spaces of the opposite sex are transsexuals. Transgender is an umbrella term that has a binary side, which is trans men and trans women, and a non-binary side, which includes a lot of different things that do not belong in the opposite sex spaces. So when you're using the term transgender and not transsexual, you are green-lighting males who look like men and have male genitalia to enter female spaces because you're conflating that with being transsexual. So it's not just this policy committee, it's, it's everything in the entire discussion about it nationwide that's being incorrectly identified. So I think we need to open the policy, I think we need to revisit it and adjust it in a way that's appropriate and actually protects students because the way that this is worded does not protect all the students.
I think, I mean, I think on the advice of council, at least at the last meeting that we had, that our policies were up to date and consistent with either state law, case law, or DC guidance, but.
What I'm saying is that the state is wrong.
No, I get that piece and I think it's also time for maybe we get an opinion from Kelly because we did at that meeting suggest that there could be potentially changes to any of these situations and maybe we reach out to Kelly to get an opinion and then potentially schedule something in the future. I think in terms of the state, we can't control that and we could reach out to, I assume, state legislators on that and look at the definition in that regard. But in terms of the policy in this district, it was the opinion of council that we're consistent and up to date. However, that doesn't mean that it hasn't changed and it probably is time to reach out to see if there were any changes on that.
I understand that that's council's opinion and I understand that that is the opinion of the state and everything, but I'm also saying that it's wrong. It's fundamentally wrong by a linguistic, by a definition, by an actual sense, it's wrong. And it opens girls to being violated by sexually deviant men who are identifying as women but making no presentation, no changes to who they are, doing nothing. It's inappropriate. And on top of being inappropriate, people are now using it in order to gain access to spaces they don't belong. There was a tech conference in Florida that was open to women and non-binary individuals and it was flooded by cisgender heterosexual men who said that they were non-binary as a way to enter it. They can also do this into sports, they can do this into bathrooms because the way that it's worded definitionally allows them to. So I'm saying that that's fine, that's their opinion, but they're wrong. And I'm someone who has lived this life for 10 years, I'm aware of what happens and I understand that maybe they're being inclusive in the way that they think, but they're wrong. It's actually endangering us and on top of that, the movement nationally, locally, it endangers the students that you're trying to protect because, again, transgender adults, now you're looking at adult males who look like men, have male appendages, going into female locker rooms. There's news stories of adult men who identify as transgender walking around female spaces with their penises out because they identify as transgender. So the laws themselves are incorrect because they use the wrong verbiage. So I want to open up the policy and look at that because it matters. It's a distinct definition and you can't teach diversity, but then take an entire group of hundreds of identities and say, okay, you're one homogenized entity and you all have the same, the same thing. Because that's the Because that's the opposite of diversity. Do you know what I mean?
I do.
I get, like, I understand that it might be contentious. I understand council ruled on it, but it's a wrong ruling. And we, that's just where I'm at.
Can I ask a question a little bit different?
Absolutely.
It's more of, what is our district's policy? I don't want to use the word policy because I don't think we truly have a policy to that. What is the precedent in our district that if adult student, what have you, identifies a male, identifies as a woman, that they can go in and use the opposite sex, either restroom or locker room?
We do not have a policy for that.
But what, what is it?
We have, so at the high school, there are gender-neutral bathrooms. There are not, it is certainly a conversation that we have to have, in which the spaces remain safe for all students, without question. There has not been a situation to date in which that has come up, but I do think it's a concern, without question.
Well, I think there needs to be something that sort of dictates that if, if somebody is going in, there is some protection to both sides of the equation, right? That says, if, if, if you were, and this is not a derogatory of, of somebody that's going down that path, right, or that's how they identify, but what is it that they have to do in order to be allowed into or only use that safe space that's allocated to them, right? We do have circumstances where females, biological females, are going into men's bathroom and locker room and vice versa. But what is it that we have to, because right now, I think it just opens up our district to issues. And we should have something that says, hey, if you are going down this road, you need to officially change the student record, right? Or you can only use the, the gender-neutral bathrooms.
So state law used to be that in order to change your gender marker on your birth certificate, you had to have sexual reassignment surgery. Obviously, that doesn't apply to kids. That, and they've done away with that because that's a form of, they call it trans-medicalism, where you're requiring someone to have surgery in order to change certain aspects of their identification markers. But that, to me, is where gender-neutral bathrooms come in, because you're providing either an isolated space or an openly gendered, you know, unisex space that they can safely go in, and then they don't have to use male restrooms, but they also don't have to use female restrooms. So it, it's not a sense of excluding somebody. Gender-neutral, one gender-neutral bathroom in every school would take care of the issue. But I disagree that just because it hasn't happened yet doesn't mean we don't prepare.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct.
Yep.
And, and super because we went down this when we were in Waymouth, I just want everybody to know, we're not talking about gender-neutral bathrooms that are full bathrooms in, in terms of six stalls and lots of people coming in and out. I, I just want to make that kind of clear.
Yep.
That it's different than I think some people think. And so a gender-neutral bathroom generally, not always, but generally in schools will be for one person.
It's like in malls, when you have a family bathroom. It's just a single bathroom.
Right.
Yep.
So if I can make a suggestion here, I think on that point here, I'd like the district to outline what is its protocol to allow students or adults to use a particular restroom, no matter who it's signed to, and what are the steps that that either student or family has to do to go through there, go through that. I, I think that is going to put a lot of people's minds at ease, especially if there are males using female bathrooms, vice versa. And that's something that we, the district, can go back to and say, we're still following the law, but this is the protocol that we're using for that. I think that's something the district should present to the policy committee, determine whether this is a policy or that's a school administration task, right? I think that's also confusion, which we will need some guidance from legal on. And then, you know, with that, we need to bridge the other topic, which is the communication piece, right? And I, I don't think the state has helped us on either one of those aspects, but I do think that we, as a district, I'm not saying it's a policy, but I think it's, it's a protocol that we should be following to protect all students regardless of transgender, transsexual, whatever it is that you identify as or how you're being defined, right? I think we can start there. We're not going to solve one policy for all of it, but I do think we need to start, at least in the safety aspect, which you bring up, Brenna, a very valid point, and then go into the communication piece. So.
I.
And we, we should, just from a, a protocol perspective, bring it up, but if we're going to have an ongoing discussion, it needs to be an agenda item on here. So my proposal is have the district present to the policy committee the thoughts on the protocol on use of bathrooms, and then that is then extended to a, a noted item on the agenda for discussion.
Yep.
That's fine, but I also want the policy itself to be discussed at some point, because I don't, I don't necessarily agree with keeping it from parents. So I want to discuss it.
The communication, you mean?
Yes.
I don't believe.
I know, I know the DESI thing, but again, DESI is wrong, and it stands to reason that there could be another way in that regard.
And I'm not disagreeing with you on that, but I don't believe there is a policy in our policy manual that addresses that. So revisiting the policy is not. I do think it's something is what is the communication? Because whatever we do does have to abide by state law, right, wrong, or indifferent, right? So I do look at, I do think we need to incorporate some sort of parent communication involved in this.
Okay.
Right? So what is that? And if that is, hey, we're going to have this discussion, and if a student says, I don't want my parents notified, okay, well, there, we can only assume there's an issue, so we're going to go through, and there's a 51A filed with the state. Now it's a state issue that they have to bring in.
Yep.
Right? So the state is not supporting us in this, and shame on them.
Which is a problem.
Which is a problem. But, you know, we're not going to sit there and be a committee of eight that says, screw the system, I'm going to buck law. We can try and come up with something that sort of meets a, a balance in that. I think the, the, some sort of how to use a restroom is definitely within legal precedent and protects us. The communication is definitely something that we need to figure out, and how do we involve the parents and not exclude them, because that's what the state law says.
Which, again, I disagree.
Yeah. And I'm not arguing whether, I disagree, I think we're on the same page as far as where the state has left us, but I, I think that is the right step. We're not going to come up with one whole inclusive policy that's going to solve all of it. Those two points, I agree with you, communication and the safety. Let's see if we can tackle those in some way or fashion, and then decide if that truly is a policy. Because one of the things we want to be careful about is setting a policy that sort of puts us in a box that doesn't allow that. So.
Okay.
Just my.
Thank you.
All great. Brenna, thank you so much for bringing that up. And I think we have some next steps here. I, I think we could probably shoot for a, a policy. Yep?
Just one last thing, right? So we're relying on Brenner from a, an expertise perspective in this, because we all don't have that P. So from a timing perspective, I think this is something we need to move pretty quickly on, right? I know budget is going to be a huge time suck, that's a technical word here, but, you know, something that we should probably get this, get this information, get this, so that we can put it on the agenda for discussion, right? So.
Okay. So I think we, if we could shoot for potentially a policy Subcommittee meeting, maybe.
I think we need to hear from the district first.
Correct. Right. But I mean, if, if we set a meeting, which can kind of set you guys with, with a little bit of a deadline, I think we could do that.
Well, we'll work on this, this week.
Okay. So we can throw some dates out.
Yeah.
We haven't decided whether or not it's going policy sub or whether or not it's going basically handbook.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Policy.
Right. So I've got, it could go just a handbook.
Because it's not necessarily a policy issue, but.
Not in terms of, at least bathrooms and use of safe spaces and all of that. That's not necessarily a policy. I have to find out from, from legal, their, their take on it.
Right. So whatever you draft, get an opinion from legal, and then we follow the direction, whether it's policy or handbook or school building protocol. I think that covers it.
Perfect. Okay. Awesome. Thank you. I think we're in a good spot there. Capital Committee, any, any updates at this point?
No, we'll be having a meeting right after the new year. The capital committee is being, there's the overarching capital committee, and then there's going to be a smaller group, which will be gathering information presented, then on to everybody else.
Okay. Perfect. I think that exhausts the agenda for tonight. Any other business that need properly come before the meeting? Tackle that. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
So move, have a second. All of the favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.